Ladies and gentlemen, it is my honor and privilege to call this meeting to order of the Tallahassee City Commission. It is 3:03 in the afternoon on Wednesday, May 8th. We've got a wonderful commission meeting ahead of us, a full commission meeting ahead of us with a public hearing at 6 o'clock as well. To start us off with the invocation, did the Kimmels make it? Wonderful, thank you so much. I'd like to introduce Mr. Sam Kimmelman from Congregation Shomaretura to provide the invocation. Thank you so much for joining us. If you'll please stand.
On behalf of Congregation Shomaretura, I want to thank Mayor Daley and the Honorable City Commission for the opportunity to provide the invocation today. My name is Sam Kimmelman. I'm the president of Congregation Shomaretura. Every day during our morning service, one of the prayers we ask God for is the wisdom to be God-like in the day ahead, and I thought that was an appropriate message as you have this meeting today. The blessing reads, "Atah chonen le Adam daat, ul ma'lemed le onesh bina." You grace humans with wisdom and teach humanity perception. Chenenu midcha chokmat bina ve daat. Bestow upon us your knowledge, insight, and understanding. Aruch ha'tarunai chonen hadaat. Blessed are you, grantor of wisdom. We ask God that you provide the city commission with the wisdom for their hearts to be open to one another and to the community they strive to serve. We ask that you provide them with the wisdom to be kind to one another. We ask that you provide them with the wisdom to give one another the benefit of the doubt. We ask that you provide them with the wisdom to be compassionate with one another. We ask that you provide them with the knowledge to see the bigger picture for which we all have a part. We ask that they remember that there are things happening in each person's life to which we may not have access, and for all that, let us say amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Mr. Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Items 5.05, 5.06, and 12.04 have been added to your meeting, your agenda material, and item 12.03 was updated to reflect the written content.
12.03 was updated...
With the update on Public Safety Camera Initiative.
Excellent. Okay, I got a question as well. 12.01 is the approval of resolutions, 24-R-16. Do we need to take that up after the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do.
Okay, sounds good. Colleagues, are you following me? That is the policy formation where we ask Supervisors of Elections to put any charter amendments that may pass this evening on the ballot officially, so we need to take up 12.01 after we take up those items on the public hearing. Any questions? Wonderful. Scene none. Okay, we have a series of presentations here this evening. First and foremost, where are my good friends from the Florida League of Cities? Come join us down here, please. Jeff, come on, Allison. Mr. Branch. Ladies and gentlemen, the Florida League of Cities is the association that represents all 411 municipalities in the state of Florida, and they do a wonderful job. And it's my honor and privilege to ask Mr. Jeff Branch to stand, to come before us. I didn't realize that this was actually what we were doing today, but all right, let's go, Jeff.
Good evening, Jeff Branch, Senior Leadership Advocate with the Florida League of Cities. I'm here joined with my colleague Allison Payne and Mary Edinburgh. Thank you so much. You know, every year we have session in Tallahassee, and so we like to recognize, in particular, three of our local officials for your advocacy throughout session. It's beyond just showing up to meetings, but really providing the feedback, testifying before committees, and really helping to advance the cause of not just only our capital city, but our entire 411 cities that make up this great state. So with that, thank you so much to you all and to our city manager, and we'll take a picture and hand out some awards.
Absolutely, sounds great. Come on, shall we?
All right, sorry about that. Thank you, you know, I'm nervous, you know. Been doing this for 18 years, we're still getting nervous. Mr. Mayor, John Daley, thank you so much for being a 2024 Home Rule Hero. Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox, thank you so much for being a 2024 Home Rule Hero. And our city manager, Risco, thank you so much as well for being a 2024 Home Rule Hero.
As you know, the city of Tallahassee is very active with the Florida League of Cities. I have served on your Board of Directors. Commissioner Williams-Cox currently serves on the Board of Directors. Commissioner Curtis Richardson serves on the Pension Advisory Committee as well, and we are the capital city, so we do realize that with the session is in here in town, we do have a responsibility above and beyond sometimes to carry the weight of all municipalities in the message, and I like to think that we step up to the plate and help as much as we possibly can. Full disclosure, my first job out of college was with the Florida League of Cities as a lobbyist as well, so it's a little bit of a homecoming. But for our first proclamation, I do want you to come, please join me, and please accept this proclamation as well. From the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas the National League of Cities was founded in 1924 in Lawrence, Kansas, as the American Municipal Association by state municipal leagues seeking more coordination and national representation as cities, towns, and villages expanded rapidly. And whereas the nonpartisan National League of Cities is the oldest and largest organization representing municipal governments throughout the United States, representing the interests of more than 19,000 cities, towns, and villages across the country. And whereas the National League of Cities works in partnership with 49 state municipal leagues, such as the Florida League of Cities, across the country to strengthen local leadership, drive innovation, and influence the federal policies that impact local programs and operations. And whereas, as the voice of cities, towns, and villages of Washington, D.C., the National League of Cities has successfully championed federal legislation solutions that support municipalities and has worked closely with Congress and the executive branch to educate policymakers on the realities of local implementation. And whereas Tallahassee is a proud member of the National League of Cities and has benefited from the organization's research, technical expertise, federal advocacy, and opportunities to learn from other local governments. And whereas local governments are the bedrock of American democracy, providing 336 million residents with the most accountable, responsive, inclusive, ethical, and transparent government in the world. And whereas the nation's smallest villages to its largest cities, America's local governments have been essential in transforming the United States of America into the greatest, most influential nation in the world. And whereas Tallahassee was first incorporated in 1824 and is proudly led today by Mayor John E. Daley, his colleagues, and the municipal workforce of dedicated public servants, now therefore, I, John Daley, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize May as National Cities, Towns, and Villages Month in celebration of America's local governments and the National League of Cities' historic centennial anniversary, read into the record in front of each and every one of you here today, signed with my signature and dated today, May 8th, 2024. Would the Florida League of Cities please come and accept this on behalf of the National League of Cities as our state record? And in full disclosure, at another point in my life, when Ginny and I lived in Washington, D.C., I actually worked for the National League of Cities as well. So it is great to have the Florida League of Cities here. It is great to honor the National League of Cities' 100-year anniversary, and please send our regard to National League of Cities. Okay, I would like to ask my friends that are active in Moms Demand Action to please come join me at the podium, and thank you so much for being here today. Ladies and gentlemen, in honor and awareness of Gun Violence Awareness Day, from the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas every day, more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence and more than 200 are shot and wounded. And whereas firearms are the number-one cause of death for children in the U.S. And whereas cities across the nation, including Tallahassee, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas in January 2013, Hadiah Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 7th, to recognize the 27th birthday of Hadiah Pendleton, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadiah and all victims and survivors of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas anyone can join the campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 7th, 2024, to help raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence, encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe, now therefore, I, John Daley, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize June 7th, 2024, as Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Tallahassee and urge all citizens to wear orange as a symbol of our hope and efforts to create a future free from gun violence, read into the record in front of each and every one of you today, signed with my signature, John Daley, dated May 8th, 2024. In addition, for the city to show our support, once again, we will be lighting up City Hall and the pedestrian bridge in orange on June 7th as well.
Thank you so much for this honor proclamation, and as the mayor said, we want to invite all of you to please join us as we light up City Hall orange on June 7th at 8:00 P.M. Join us for awareness of gun violence. Thank you.
It's my honor and privilege to invite Major Roger Ross and Major Joy Ross from the Salvation Major Rossis, okay. In honor of the National Salvation Army Week, from the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas 73 years, the Salvation Army has been physically, emotionally, and spiritually serving the people of Tallahassee. And whereas the Salvation Army is present wherever needs are greatest, especially during times of crisis, where vulnerable citizens are more at risk of becoming homeless, food insecure, addicted, or spiritually tired. And whereas the Salvation Army invites the people of Tallahassee to love beyond and to help the organization continue to provide life-changing aid to those who need it most. And whereas it is fitting and proper during National Salvation Army Week to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the city of Tallahassee. And whereas National Salvation Army Week is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve their neighbors in need alongside the Salvation Army with their resources and time, now therefore, I, John Daley, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize May 13th through the 19th, 2024, as National Salvation Army Week in the city of Tallahassee and encourage all citizens to join, to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful, read into the record in front of each and every one of you today, signed with my signature, John Daley, dated May 13th. Oh, I dated it wrong. Do you want it dated today, or May 13th is the beginning of the week, so that's appropriate? Excellent. Dated May 13th in advance, 2024. It's my honor and privilege. Major Ross, thank you. Major Ross, thank you. Absolutely, and a few comments?
Thank you very much for the support of the city of Tallahassee, and we, through the many myriad of programs the Salvation Army provides to our community, we serve and we provide, and we're doing the most good that we can. So thank you very much for your support.
I'm going to save that one for last. Please come join me and any other guests that you have with you. Excellent. It's Paul Renfro from the Tallahassee Leon County Bicycle Working Group. Ladies and gentlemen, in honor of Bike Month. Hey, thanks for coming, man. Appreciate it. It's good to see you.
Likewise.
From the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas, for more than a century, the bicycle has played an important role in the lives of countless Americans. And whereas today, millions nationwide engage in bicycling as an environmentally sound form of transportation, an excellent form of fitness, and quality family recreation. And whereas local cycling organizations and independent cyclists throughout our community are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities. And whereas the city of Tallahassee's expansive network of on-road and off-road trails support the livelihood of our citizens while adding to their quality of life. And whereas the city continually invests in enhancing its bicycle infrastructure, including the construction of bike lanes along FAMU Way, the installation of bike racks as part of sense-of-place efforts, and the addition of a bike skills area in Lafayette Heritage Trail Park. And whereas the city of Tallahassee has been named a Silver Level Bicycle Friendly Community by the League of American Bicyclists. And whereas the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, as well as the Greenways Master Plan, enhancing the safety and connectivity of bike infrastructure citywide. And whereas BikeTallahassee.com and MBTallahassee.com provide a host of information to help riders plan routes, cycle safely, and connect with fellow cyclists, now therefore, I, John Daley, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby proclaim this month of May as Bike Month in Tallahassee and urge all citizens to participate by taking a bike ride to explore our beautiful community, read into the record in front of each and every one of you here today, signed with my signature, John Daley, dated May 8th, 2024. Paul, it's my honor and privilege to present you with this proclamation on behalf of the city of Tallahassee. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. All right, I have a few remarks here. So on behalf of the Joint City-County Bicycling Work Group, of which I am part, I'd like to thank you so much for issuing this proclamation. With our hundreds of miles of trails and our constantly improving urban cycling infrastructure, Tallahassee is well poised to become a cycling capital. For those who don't know me, I am an Associate Professor of History at Florida State University and a proud bike commuter. For the past several years, I have commuted to FSU's campus from Benton Hills on my bicycle, taking Mitchell past Winthrop Park, climbing that steep hill up to Micasuki, cycling past Kate Sullivan and Cobb, down the hill on Hillcrest, Georgia, and Talaflo, past Leon High School, across Tennessee, up the steep hill on Call Street, all the way to campus. When I arrive on campus, I feel rejuvenated and free, and I never have to fight for parking. I pull up to the bike rack by Bellamy, lock up my bicycle, and enter the building. The development and maintenance of bike lanes and parallel infrastructure make my commute possible and, for the most part, keep me safe. I'm still at the mercy of motorists, however. The overwhelming majority of whom, it should be noted, are attentive, kind, and courteous. But the best way to prevent drivers from harming cyclists like me is to reduce the number of cars on the road while increasing the number of protected bike lanes. By investing in the latter, we can guarantee the former. If you build it, they will come. We can also guarantee the former by encouraging locals to walk or cycle to work. Taking these and other steps will ensure safer, more pleasant, more efficient, less congested commuting experience for walkers, cyclists, and motorists alike. So this Bike Month and beyond, let's dedicate ourselves to making Tallahassee a true cycling capital. Thank you so much.
the manager of Public Infrastructure and Engineering, and all of the great men and women in public works. Come on forward so we can honor you and recognize your contribution. All right, come on down, everybody. We got the whole crew here. Well, we got a lot of the crew here. Ladies and gentlemen, first of all, before we get into the formality, and I do this every year, on behalf of, on a personal thank you, on behalf of family, on behalf of community in the city, y'all do an absolutely tremendous job, and we certainly do appreciate you. We love you, and y'all are out there each and every day, literally in the trenches and in the ditches, doing really hard work. But it is no secret that we are nationally known and we are the best, and that is because of you. And so it is my honor and privilege, from the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Hold on, do we have, when is rodeo? Have we missed? 23rd of May coming up? Okay, we're bringing home the hardware again, right? Okay, just making sure. Just making sure. In our community, there is a friendly competition, shall we say, between the city of Tallahassee Public Works and the county Public Works Department. It is absolutely amazing and impressive, the technical skills using heavy machinery and what goes into it, and it is, it is very competitive, shall we say, right? And every year, the city absolutely just dominates, and I expect nothing less this, expect nothing less this year. Bring home the hardware. I look forward to, I look forward to coming out and joining you as I do every year. From the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And whereas public works professionals, including frontline workers, engineers, operators, scientists, technicians, and more, are advancing quality of life for all as they plan, design, build, maintain, and operate the infrastructure, public facilities, and services that are vitally important to sustainable, healthy, resilient communities, contribute to a high quality of life, and are integral to our city's transportation, water, wastewater, stormwater, energy, and solid waste systems, public buildings, parks and trail system, and more. And whereas the city of Tallahassee Public Works Professionals were honored during the APWA Big Ben Branch Awards for five projects and were subsequently honored during the 2024 APWA Florida Chapter Public Works Expo, earning the 2024 Project of the Year Award for the Market District Multi-Purpose Stormwater Management Project. And whereas during the same expo, city public works professional James Moore, where's James? Is he here with a, James, step forward, let us shine the light on you.
All right, James.
James Moore placed first in the Excavator and Backhoe Individual Events in the 2024 Equipment Rodeo that we were just talking about. No mercy, James, bring it home again this year, okay? All right, here we go. And whereas Tallahassee contin, I'm sorry?
I said he has a confident look on his face.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And whereas Tallahassee continually invests in its infrastructure to ensure reliable, safe, effective service, including projects in fiscal year 2023 that invested 10.9 million in street and sidewalk improvements, 8.2 million in stormwater enhancements, 14.6 million in sewer system upgrades, and 19.4 million in potable water system enhancements. And whereas, in addition to providing world-class services daily, the city's public works professionals are crucial for severe weather responses and other crises, illustrating the essence of public works industry's commitment to be first in and last out during emergency responses. And whereas city crews demonstrated their dedication and willingness to go above and beyond after Hurricane Adalia by restoring services in Tallahassee and then traveling to other cities, including the Greenville area, to restore vital services to impacted communities. And whereas we celebrated the hard work and dedication of public works professionals in Tallahassee and throughout the world, now therefore, I, John Daley, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through May 25th as National Public Works Week in Tallahassee and applaud the contributions public works professionals make to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, read into the record in front of each and every one of you, signed today with my, my signature, John Daley, dated May 8th, 2024. And as I do pass this off to Eric to accept, and any comments you want to make in advance of storm season that's coming up, again, thank you very, very, very much for all that you did.
So Mayor Commissioners, thanks for taking the time to recognize these professionals today. This year, the American Public Works Association is working to emphasize how public works professionals advance our quality of life. The city has hundreds of public works professionals to help keep our community strong, provide support for infrastructure services in the many different areas that Mr. Daley, Mayor Daley mentioned earlier. It takes a very special person to make a career as a public works professional, public servant. These professionals selflessly serve the public day in and day out in some of the most extreme environmental conditions. During catastrophic events, public works professionals are the frontline. They are the first in clearing roads and making sure that essential services are restored and accessible for our citizens. Mayor Commissioners, this year's APWA Local Big Ben Branch Rodeo is May 23rd at the Appalachian Regional Park. Please come out and celebrate National Public Works Week with us and our public works professionals as well. Public works professionals are frontline responders, they are first responders, and they are advancing our quality of life for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Left him at home. Good to see you, man. Where have you been?
Good to see you all. Thank you all so much. Good to see you all.
a point of personal privilege, and my friends that are still in the room for Public Works, you know, we got a gentleman that's been working for the city in Public Works, whose name happens to be John Daly.
Yes.
Spelled the exact same way, and bless his heart, I could only imagine the emails that that man must get. But I had to give a shout out for John Daly, and I look forward to seeing him soon. Usually, we run into each other at the rodeo competition. All right, what a great way to start the meeting. We are now on announcements. Commissioner Williams Cox, you are recognized for a special announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity to say happy birthday to Mr. Henry Murphy. He turned 100 on April 27th, and the mayor has provided a proclamation. Mr. Deacon Christopher Davis is here. We gave it to him before the meeting so that he could take it to Mr. Murphy. Unfortunately, Mr. Murphy couldn't be here. When you turn 100, you can be wherever you want to be.
You know, you turn 100, we come to you.
That's right. That's right. So hopefully, he's out there watching, Mr. Murphy, having worked with him myself. I know what a stellar citizen he is in this community and what he has meant to this community, and so we just want to say, happy 100. We'll see you at the 101st celebration.
Excellent. Happy birthday. Deacon, thank you so much for taking the proclamation. We certainly do appreciate it. All right, we are on 7.01, which is the acceptance of the Fiscal Year 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Mr. Clerk, I'll turn it over to you for introduction.
Mr. Mayor, I believe on this item, Dennis Sutton, our inspector general, is going to present this report.
All right, sorry about that. Mr. Sutton, for introduction.
No problem, thank you. Normally, the chair of the Audit Committee would introduce this item, but she wasn't able to be here. She sends her regrets and asked me to fill in for her. And if you'll please indulge me for just a minute, this, because I think this is a big deal. I could use all the technical accounting and auditing jargon, but, but really, the city has done something that we haven't done in 20 years with this year's annual comprehensive financial report. We've received a completely clean audit from the external auditors. No, no comments, no management letter comments, nothing. It's completely squeaky clean, and this is something we haven't done in over 20 years. And I know you all have heard me say this or something similar to it. As an auditor, we don't feel like we've done our job unless we find something, no matter how small it is. And they came up with nothing this year, completely clean.
Great.
And, but, but really, that's a testament to the good work of all the people in the There are so many people that deserve recognition, and unfortunately, I don't have the time to recognize everybody, but the bulk of the work was done by Patrick Twiman, Roberta Stevens, and their staff. And I know that Patrick is here and would like to make a couple of comments, and then I'd like to make a couple more myself, if you'll indulge me.
Sure. Patrick, please come join us. And on behalf of the commission, thank you very much for your hard work, day in and day out, especially on, on the annual review and the audit. And floor is yours, sir.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, appointed officials. Thank you so much for letting me say just a few brief words. I am so proud of not only Rita Stevens and her financial reporting staff, who prepared the bulk of the ACFA, but also the whole financial services team. The financial statement and audit process is long, complex, and frequently challenging, and we could not have got where we are today without the efforts of that whole team. I also want to recognize how appreciative I am that we've been able to develop such an effective and professional working relationship with our external auditors, MSL. It's been a pleasure working with them, and in short, I couldn't be more thankful for the results and the outcome of this year's audit, and it's a testament to the work of many. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you. Mr. Sutton.
Thank you. And if you, if you just bear with me, I'd like to recognize some of the things that have gone into getting us to this point right here. To start with, I want to recognize that we got the new UMAC system online and running, and that really is a testament to James Barnes, his staff, and customer operations, Tim Davis, and TNI supporting the implementation, implementation of that staff of the, of the new system. It, it was the last piece that let us get to this point where we could do our, reporting of our customer utility accounts aging. It was something that took us a long time, and if we didn't get that done, we were going to have to be reporting to the Auditor General of the state of Florida as to why we couldn't get that done. But another thing that had to be done this year was, we had two major accounting standards that had to be implemented that went across the entire city and dealt with recognizing leases and long-term subscription agreements for software services. But, but also, and the last, the last thing I really want to point out is that the grants office has done a great job of keeping us clean in grant reporting. You guys realize it seems like almost every other commission meeting, you're being asked to accept a grant that the city has won in one place or another across the city, and with each one of those grants comes reporting requirements and compliance requirements, and the city has done a great job staying on top and being compliant with everything, and Roberta has done a good job of coordinating all of that. I don't know if she'd say that she has the grants office working as a well-oiled machine right now, but she's getting there, and the auditors didn't have any issues with anything with grants, and so that's a really major accomplishment for them. And, and I could keep going on and on about the folks that dealt with and got us to this point, but I just wanted to let you all know that I really am thankful of everybody, and it's a great thing that we've gotten here, because I really do know how much it took across the entire city to get it right with all of the accounting in an organization of this size. So with that, I'd like to seek your acceptance of the city's comprehensive financial report, and thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right, colleagues, looking for direction. Commissioner Williams Cox?
Your to the mayor pro tem.
Move staff recommendation to accept the report, Mr. Mayor.
Option number one's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any further comment? Seeing none. I have a couple of comments. Job well done, team. Job well done. That's amazing. First time in 20 years. Clean slate, no comments. Excellent. All those in favor of the motion on table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on the consent agenda. Have any items been pulled off of the consent agenda?
No, sir.
All right, do we have any public comment on the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, do we have any direction on the consent agenda?
Move consent, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem properly moves consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item number 10.01, Audit Committee Appointment. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 10.01 asks for your approval of three appointments to the Audit Committee. David Reed currently serves and is interested in reappointment. Nathan Newton currently serves, is interested in reappointment, and John Kirk is currently serving and interested in reappointment. With your approval, one of the terms for one of these three individuals will be adjusted slightly. That will allow a staggered rotation of, of term for this committee, which needs to occur after the recent years we added a couple of seats, and wanted to be sure we get the new seat staggered.
Excellent. Any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right, colleagues.
Move option one.
Commissioner Porter has moved option one. Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously, 5-0. Item 10.02, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you again, Mayor. This item is for your Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Staff recommends Jeremy Floyd to fill the current term of a seat. His term would expire on June 30th of 2025 and would be eligible to serve an additional term after that.
All right, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues, looking for direction?
Move staff recommendation on the appointment.
Second.
Been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously, 5-0. Item number 10.03, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. For the Environmental Board, there is a seat which expires on October 31st, 2024, and is vacant. Nadine Gordon is recommended to fill out the unexpired portion of this term, and she would then be eligible to serve full term after that.
All right, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues, looking for direction?
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the mayor pro tem. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item number 10.04, Mr. Clerk.
This item is a committee appointment by the mayor to the Special Events Advisory Committee. The item asks for your ratification of the appointment that the mayor has made. Paula DeBoltz-Johnson would serve out a term in seat one, which would expire on February 28th of 2025.
All right, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Great, I will make the motion for, for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item 10.05, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 10.05 asks, staff recommends Nan Hillis to fill seat two on the Sinking Fund Commission. That position involves a sinking fund commission, which serves with you as well as serving on our Investment Advisory Committee. That term would expire on May 31st of 2026.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right, colleagues, looking for direction.
Move staff recommendation on the appointment, Mr. Mayor.
It's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously, 5-0. Item 10.06, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, this item is for appointments to the Downtown Improvement Authority. There are several individuals, seat two, Slaton Murray, seat three, William Moore, and seat eight, Chris Dudley. Each of those individuals serves a term that expires on May 31st, and each is eligible and interested in reappointment, so the item requests your approval of those three reappointments.
Great, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we do have one speaker on this item.
Okay.
And that is Stanley Sims.
Okay. Mr. Sims, you have three minutes. You name an, name an address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. My name is Stanley Sims. I'm at 1320 Avondale Way. Reason why I wanted to speak particularly upon this appointment, I have, for a very long time, has tried to promote diversity downtown, and I think that diversity is very important on this board. I also want to say, as a caveat, I think Elizabeth has, has done a tremendous job working in the downtown area and working with our merchants. We still see the lack of minority businesses downtown, but I do want to say, under the leadership of Elizabeth, minority businesses have been coming downtown. We're not there yet, but her eye was on the prize, and I think that we should also keep our eye on the prize when we come to the appointment of our board. It is very important to me that, most men don't say this, but we don't have anywhere for our ladies to run downtown and get a hat. I remember when downtown, the Deed Hat Shop right there on College was there for years. I bought my mom Mother's Day hats from there. Where can you buy a blouse? Where can, little shops, and I think minority businesses brings that culture of real diversity to Tallahassee, and to have a part on that board, to keep that in the foresight of our downtown improvement is a great thing. It's, it's challenging because of the, the price of, of rent and leasing downtown, but Elizabeth was working on some different strategies to lower those costs so that minority businesses, minor, small businesses can afford in this market. So I just wanted to keep that on your radar as I keep it on the Downtown Improvement Authority radar as well. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker, please.
No additional speakers.
All right, looking for direction. Commissioner Matla, you are representative on, on this board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move a staff recommendation. It's, it's been a pleasure to serve with these individuals.
Excellent. Is there a second? Made by Commissioner, by the mayor pro tem. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Commissioner Porter.
I just wanted to say, welcome to Mr. Mathis, the new executive director of the Downtown Improvement Authority. I don't know if, I think that hire may have happened before we, our last meeting, and I wanted to congratulate him and welcome him.
Excellent. Motion passes, 5-0. All right, we are on the introduction of ordinance 11.01. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11.01 is the introduction of ordinance number 24-0-05, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee adopting a text amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan, amending the utilities sanitary sewer element, providing for severability and conflicts, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 24-0-05 and set the first and only public hearing on June 19th at 6:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues, looking for direction?
Move staff recommendation, option number one, Mr. Mayor.
Option number one's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously, 5-0. 11.02.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11.02 is the introduction of ordinance number 24-0-06, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee adopting a text amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan, amending the land use element, providing for severability and conflicts, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 24-0-06 and set the first and only public hearing on June 19th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
All right, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right, looking for direction, colleagues.
Move staff recommendation on option number one to introduce the ordinance, Mr. Mayor.
Been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by, was that Commissioner Williams Cox?
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously, 5-0. Item 11.03, Madam Attorney.
Item number 11.03 is the introduction of ordinance number 24-0-07, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee adopting a text amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan, amending the intergovernmental coordination element, providing for severability and conflicts, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 24-0-07 and set the first and only public hearing on June 19th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
All right, do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Excellent.
Move staff recommendation, option number one.
Second.
Option number one's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem and seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously, 5-0. Item 11.04, Madam Attorney.
Item number 11.04 is the introduction of ordinance number 24-0-17, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Section 6 of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee to annex within the corporate area of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 24-0-17 and set the first and only public hearing on June 19th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City 19th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
All right, Mr. Clerk, do you have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, looking for direction?
Move staff recommendation, option number one, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tim has properly moved option number one. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. We're on item number 11.05. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11.05 is the introduction of ordinance number 24-0-26, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Section 10-413 of the Tallahassee Land Development Code concerning community services and facilities institutional uses, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date. The recommended action is options one and two, initiate and introduce ordinance number 24-0-26, and set the first and only public hearing on June 19th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
All right, Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues, looking for direction?
Move staff recommendation, options one and two, Mr. Mayor.
Options number one and two have been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Item 11.06. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11.06 is the introduction of ordinance number 24-Z-15, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee amending the Southwood Planned Unit Development on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee. Project site located on approximately 3,322 acres and is generally bounded by Appalachia Parkway on the north, Southwood Plantation Road, and Biltmore Avenue on the east, Tram Road on the south, and Capital Circle Southeast on the west, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 24-Z-15, and set the first and only public hearing on June 19th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the Board Doc system.
All right, Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues, looking for direction?
Move option number one is recommended by staff.
Second.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Item 11.07. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11.07 is the introduction of ordinance number 24-0-25, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, providing for a referendum election to be held on November 5, 2024, for the purpose of determining whether the city charter should be amended regarding the role of the Inspector General, amending Sections 32, 33, and 34 of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, ordinance, introduce ordinance number 24-0-25, adopting a proposed charter amendment defining the role of the Inspector General, and set the first and only public hearing on June 19th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir, we do. Ernie Payne is the one speaker that we have on this item.
You name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Ernie Payne, 2006, East Indian Head Drive, on behalf of the Citizens for Ethics Reform. I won't repeat everything that I said at your last meeting or in the email that I sent you all last Friday. However, I continue to stand by everything I said previously. I'm concerned that the issues that most of you seemed to take seriously at your last meeting regarding the importance of independent legal counsel for the Inspector General have not been adequately addressed in the proposed charter amendment. I'm also concerned that the intent to create a more independent Inspector General is not made clear in the proposed ballot language for the voters. It was indicated at your last meeting, prior to the motion that passed four to one, that independent legal counsel would be addressed either in the charter amendment or in the supporting ordinance. From my perspective, neither was done. I believe that in fairness to the voters who are being asked to make such a significant change to the structure of their city government, these issues should be made as clear and as explicit as possible. I recognize the very short time available to make any significant changes before it must be submitted to the supervisor of elections. I would not want to delay that. But if these adjustments can't be made quickly enough, I believe that the public might be reassured in your concern for accountability in government if you will at least verbally commit to addressing these issues through an updated supporting ordinance, either prior to the November election or as soon as possible after the charter amendment is passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
No additional speakers.
All right, colleagues, looking for direction?
Move staff recommendation.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim. Any further discussion? Commissioner Matla.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the Speaker. Madam Attorney, we discussed in the future if this were to pass, the process for developing an ordinance, speaking to, specifically for the Inspector General when needed to request outside counsel. Can you speak to that?
Mr. Mayor.
Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Commissioner. So what will happen in, with all of the charter amendments is that if the voters vote to adopt the proposals, the amendments as proposed, we will have to go back in, into the ordinances and sort of clean them up based on what happens with the charter amendment. That would be true of the Inspector General one as well. We can't change the ordinances prior to the referendum because they may not be changed. So we will, and we do intend, to go back in and fix any places in the ordinances where there might be, we might have created inconsistencies when, if or when a charter amendment passes.
Okay, and would it be appropriate to schedule that in advance or wait to see the verdict?
It's really not appropriate to schedule it in advance because we would then be making changes to the ordinance that would not be consistent with the current charter, and so we wouldn't make the changes in the ordinance until after we knew exactly what the charter was going to say, whether it was going to stay the same or be voted to be amended.
Yeah, I understand the issue, and I understand where we're going with it. You know, I fully support if this ballot initiative passes that we update our ordinance at that time, to always have the flexibility to provide independent counsel at the request of the Inspector General when needed. Do you have a comment?
Sure.
Just to provide some clarity, that provision is already in city ordinance, so it's not something that's missing now. There is already provisions in ordinance for the Inspector General to seek independent counsel if the city attorney decides that there is a conflict of interest.
Would you like to comment on this?
No, that is true, that it is already a provision in the ordinance. That's correct. Yes.
All right. All those in favor of the motion on the table made by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Do we have any other ordinances to be introduced this evening, Madam Attorney?
No, sir.
We're on policy formation and direction. We will take up 12.01 after the public hearing this evening. 12.02, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me ask John Reddick, our Growth Management Director, to come forward. John will make this presentation. This item relates to information regarding our parking standards and minimum parking requirements. You asked for this some meetings ago, and we've compiled information. We've summarized our approach locally in Tallahassee. It dates back many, many years, back to 1984 and the Land Development Code, and so we do have minimum parking standards in our approach. We also have the ability for variances to that. We exercise that from time to time when it's demonstrated as feasible and not harmful to the surrounding area. So with that, John, if you would kind of summarize where we are, and Mayor Commissioners, we're available for your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, and good afternoon. I will elaborate briefly on what the city manager just said. We did look at your request at a nationwide trend and a variety of cities across the nation, and a mountain of literature on this subject right now, which has to do with essentially not requiring more parking than is needed for new developments. And there's a lot of benefits to implementing policies that do just that. It reduces the amount of land disturbance and stormwater impacts and ultimately the project cost, because those costs get passed down through the development and on to residents, consumers. And when you look at the fact that a typical parking space, service space, could be $8,000, and a typical structured parking space is closer to $28,000, that adds up quickly as you start requiring more and more parking that a development might not need. So there are movements to move away from these minimum standards, and we see a variety of approaches. Some of them are just district-specific. Some of them have different approaches to how they would allow that to be reduced. And a lot of it you see in tandem with improvements in other modes of transportation, improved pedestrian and bike facilities, transit facilities. And so I summarize all that to say, a lot of that reflects what we're doing locally. So we, I'll say, our most significant update to our parking management is with the adoption of our multimodal transportation district. For example, within our central core, we do not have a minimum parking requirement. So that's, you know, we're over a decade beyond what a lot of these communities are just now doing. We have very flexible parking standards. We allow for public parking within 1,000 feet of a property to count towards your parking standards. And then, citywide, we incentivize and encourage shared parking agreements, and we have flexibility for redevelopment as an incentive for redevelopment projects. So we have really set in where we don't encounter very often a developer who's having to provide more than they think they need. And that's especially true within our multimodal district. And again, within that district, we have enhanced requirements for pedestrian facilities, for transit facilities. And one thing that we have that, I don't know that it's unique per se, but we do have an administrative process. The city manager alluded to a variance, but that is really administrative where ultimately the Growth Management Director has the authority to approve an alternative number of parking spaces. So for example, in the last five years, we've had about 30 requests from developments to provide fewer spaces than the code would otherwise require. Each of those, we get more information of just the detailed operations of that occupant there, and then we have the authority to just bake that into the permit review and not extend any sort of permit timelines and be able to approve that. So over those 30 requests, we've approved the waiver of about 1,000 parking spaces. So when you think about the costs and the land consumption of that, that's significant to be able to do that. And I will even say that the majority of those are outside of our multimodal district, which I think is a testament to how effective our current policies are within the MMTD, within that district. So most of that is coming outside of the multimodal district. I think one thing that's important, we did see, so there's a lot of trends of waiving or removing these requirements across the country. There also is a lot of literature with these when they're saying, what was the, you know, are they seeing the intended outcomes? In terms of not requiring more than a developer needs, they are seeing that. There are also issues of moving too much, too quickly, too far too quickly, and where you have an auto-dominated culture, and suddenly there's not parking, and you're, what it does is, in a lot of commercial areas, it puts pressure on neighboring neighborhoods, residential areas, because that's where the spillover goes to. And so you see that in a lot of large metros, Miami, Phoenix, Denver has dealt with that, and all three of those are examples where they actually scaled back slightly or altered how they are approaching that after taking initial action. So what that leaves us, if we look at local examples, in Tallahassee, I would think of, you know, my old neighborhood, which is midtown, an area that very successfully, from a commercial standpoint, and will continue to be successful, and is zoned for, you know, future of higher intensities of development and to continue that path. And that's an area where if we waived any ability to check the amount of parking that a development is going to provide, it can exacerbate an issue of pushing parking into a neighborhood like Lafayette Park, who then has to bear the burden of providing parking for all the commercial establishments in that area. So while we have something in place, a system in place where we have been able to accommodate just about every development that we have come through our door and make sure that we're not providing more than they need, we also reserve that ability to look at a case-by-case basis and assess and know whether or not a project is going to adversely affect neighboring property owners, businesses, neighborhoods, if we don't require that minimum parking of some sort. So I'll conclude there and be available for questions. Thank you.
Excellent. I think we have two public commenters, and I'm coming to Commissioner Porter. So let's go to public speakers first?
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Stanley Sims, and then Taylor Jones.
Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Stanley Sims, 1320 Avondale Way. And John, I want to say, I appreciate you tackling this beef. But here's just some few things that I like to drop in your spirit. And a lot of the Commissioners here, senior citizens have a lot of problems accessing city halls because of lack of parking. And I hear that with our handicap as well. One of my suggestions that I'd like for you to think of, number one, your free parking is only in the parking garage. It's only for 15 minutes. The older folks tell me, it takes them 15 minutes to find a park. So if that could be extended to 30 minutes, it would then alleviate them having to pay and rush. The second thing is, it's not known to our citizens that if they park in the garage and they want to attend the City Commission meetings, that you guys will validate their parking. So if we can start advertising that as well. Handicap parking. They've also, you know, they have talked about the number of accessible handicap parking on the streets, and I'm not fussing. I'm just showing, you know, they will tell me things that I probably don't reach you. And I understand that it is very complicated with all of these businesses downtown. But just these little few things, well, one, keeps citizens better engaged in their local government. Number two, also allows them with their mobility in getting out. Because the number three thing, I'm a little apprehensive about bringing up, but I'm going to bring it up because it was promised to the citizens, to the employees of City of Tallahassee. When we tore down that Pepper building that my mama worked in, those city employees were told that you're going to pay for your parking, but after a while, you will no longer have to pay. Well, that time of them not having to pay has not come to the day, even though some city employees don't pay. And then, and I'm not sure of this, if this is still an issue, that all city employees don't pay the same amount for parking.
You have 30 seconds.
And so we need to kind of look, because you don't pick your location of where you work. So I was told that the people that park on the baseball fields out in the open pay cheaper. So my structure is about pretty much operations of what we got on, but thank you for the work.
Our next speaker, please.
Taylor Jones. And we'll have, I have no other speakers after this one.
Okay. You name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Taylor Jones, and my address is 4541 Hickory Forest Circle. As city staff have recognized, minimum parking requirements are supported by limited and outdated data. Currently, over 1,400 cities across the country have already reduced or removed minimum parking requirements citywide, like Gainesville did two years ago, and Birmingham, Alabama did just yesterday. So the commission and city staff are on the right track by reevaluating our parking policies. Eliminating minimum parking requirements supports our economy by making housing more affordable and removing additional barriers to entry for small local businesses. Minimum parking requirements disproportionately affect low-income residents, many of whom may not own cars but end up paying for parking infrastructure. If our goal is to reduce economic segregation, we need to remove parking minimums. If our goal is to support small local businesses, we need to remove parking minimums. If our goal is to be a walkable city, we need to remove parking minimums. We can ensure that neighborhood concerns are addressed through the creation of residential parking program, parking permit programs for neighborhoods, like most cities do. We need to balance neighborhood concerns with our need to eliminate parking minimums that ultimately perpetuate barriers to entry for small businesses and exacerbate the housing crisis across the city. While there still are opportunities to improve the MMTD, it has been a great step towards becoming a more walkable community. The city has made lots of steps in the right direction over the years by finding ways to reduce minimum parking requirements. Eliminating them is the next step in adopting Eliminating them is the next step in adopting national best practices. Taking this next step in the right direction could mean removing minimum parking requirements for just the MMTD or removing minimum parking requirements for small businesses citywide, such as for lots of 10,000 square feet or less, which other cities have done. We essentially require sprawling development patterns when we require parking, which unintentionally adds even more unnecessary barriers to supporting small local businesses. All minimum parking requirements serve to exacerbate inequity, increase adverse environmental impacts, and create obstacles to walkability and affordable housing. Removing minimum parking requirements does not mean that there will be no parking. It just means that the city will be, not be using an arbitrary pseudoscience in its development policies and will allow new businesses and their banks to privately address this issue based on their individual needs, as opposed to a one-size-fits-all approach. If we want to live up to our stated goals and fight economic segregation in our city, curb sprawl, and protect the environment, please eliminate minimum parking requirements. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
No other speakers on this item.
Okay. Commissioner Porter, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Reddick. Thank you. For the, well, first I'll say, thank you for the item. For the examples that you gave, FSU Academic Health Center, Emmerick Cove Apartments, the Deep Brewing Tasting Room, do you happen to know how many spaces they were asking to, I mean, so they, you know, we were approved to provide 14 fewer, 70 fewer, 104 fewer. How off-base was that? Was that just what they were asking for, the disparity? Or is my question making sense?
Are you asking if we required more than they?
Yeah, did we require more? Thank you. Did we require more than they were asking to provide?
No, in each of those cases, we were able to work with them and to get the justification we needed to satisfy their request.
Did we, did we talk to Gainesville or did we look into Gainesville? Because the list of cities does not include Gainesville.
We did look at Gainesville. I wouldn't say we had any detailed conversations with them about that, about what they've experienced since they adopted that.
Okay. Because part of, I mean, I feel comfortable, and I know that's not what we're discussing right now, but I was hoping for more options in this item, like the speaker just presented, you know, whether it's just within the MMTD, whether it's for buildings with a certain square footage. We're not Miami or Phoenix or Denver. And it is costly to developers, to businesses, as well as to residents who are living in, you know, especially if you're in an apartment complex where, that's new or any new place that's providing parking. So I feel comfortable with, with the idea of ending parking minimum mandates and exploring, though of course, how we want to address what concerns and unintended consequences could arise. At the same time, it is a slow-going process. If we want to be serious about being a walkable city, a multimodal city, making parking uncomfortable and inconvenient and expensive is just a part of that. And as that happens, our job as the city, which we're already working on, is making sure the infrastructure is there for transit, for doing all of these things safely. I say that just to say that we all know that there's, there's those growing pains that come with any city as their population grows or as they make a transition to, from auto-centric planning to people-centric planning. So I'm more comfortable continuing the conversation because I do think that desire is there. When I speak to residents, when I speak to business owners and developers, including people who are in the neighborhoods that abut business, you know, urban areas like Midtown. So I would like to continue this conversation and explore other options that perhaps other cities are, have explored too, like if it's just in the MMTD, if it's just, I would like to see if there are options that, that staff thinks and that the commission thinks could move us, even if it's just a step ahead to, towards where we want to be, because I think that there's a lot of potential here and there does seem to be a lot of support in the community across different spectrums for moving forward.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Reddick. I really do appreciate the kind of incremental progress we have made since the kind of disastrous 80s, 90s mega asphalt parking lots, and we've started to see those redevelop, more infill inside the actual parking lot itself and the concessions made. But I'm still, I'm interested in just removing the barrier, the red tape of the conversation at all. It's great that we're able to work with the business owners one-on-one, but let's just take it off the plate and let the market decide how many parking spots they need as they develop. There's a wide range of businesses, some of us decide, and they know their clientele better than we will ever do. They might know if their clientele is more prone to ride transit or take an Uber to use autonomous transportation as it comes about. I don't think removing parking minimums is going to create some giant chaos. And on the other side of that, the only email I've received about this was from a neighborhood advocate in support of removing parking minimums. Because, you know, my view is, public parking belongs to everybody. And I understand it might not always be convenient to get, but you know, you don't get a free parking spot in front of your business or house by default, right? All public parking should be spared within reason. And I do think as, if that pressure rises, it creates the perfect situation for a market-based solution. So you look at cities like Atlanta where parking can be difficult, but you can find parking you might pay for, you might walk a little further, but it hasn't created, it hasn't hindered growth or development and really has strengthened those neighborhoods. And it also takes away a barrier of entry for startup businesses. I mean, it's a huge expense to provide additional parking that you may need. So I think it's just another hurdle we can eliminate to pave the way for more people to share in the prosperity of our community. So I'd make a motion that we bring back an item and to completely remove parking minimums.
Second.
Motion's been made to bring back agenda item, completely removing all parking minimums. And there's a second by Commissioner Porter. All right, further discussion. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank staff for this update. I didn't come prepared to do what has been motioned. I need more information before I go to that quantum leap. Because as Mr. Sims has mentioned, depending on where you are in life, parking is going to be important to you, whether you're a senior citizen or you're disabled or what have you. And I think that we need to be flexible, continue to be flexible, and keep an eye on what happens in neighborhoods when we begin to do different things with parking. And all neighborhoods are not created equal. And so I'm not ready here tonight to sit here and say, let's eliminate anything. I'm expect, I got what I expected was an update. And I agree, we should continue the conversation. And as we continue the conversation, I think we need to be intentional about how we proceed because we here today are making, maybe making a decision based on where we sit today, but we've got to look towards the future and not only see what the trends are right now, but what is trending as we, our population is living longer and stronger and what that means to them. We are a business city. We're a college town. We're a capital city. So the needs are different and I think we need to be agile and mobile when it comes to doing things in our city. And I have no problem with them being compared to other, you know, comparing with what other cities are doing, but the bottom line is, we've got to do what's right for Tallahassee because that's who we're charged, the people are charged us to be responsible for. So I am not ready to make that quantum leap to eliminating parking minimums. I think we need to continue the conversation.
Mayor Pratim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I too didn't come prepared today to make that type of decision. I thought it was an update as well. And I agree that the discussion can continue and should continue. I want to commend staff for the incremental progress that we have made in this direction. It clearly states that we understand what the issue is and that it needs to be addressed. You know, when you start comparing us to other cities, you don't know what all factors are involved in that comparison. It may not be an equal comparison. And so as I think Commissioner Williams-Cox has said, we need to do what's important for the city of Tallahassee. And that's where we are right now. And so I would think, I would hope that we would continue this discussion, let staff continue to look at the issues with parking as they arise, both in our neighborhoods and in our commercial districts. And then there may be a time in the near future that we're ready to make that kind of decision, but I don't think tonight is the time to make that kind of decision, especially without the recommendation of staff that's been working this issue now for a number
Any other comments? Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering what my colleagues would want in the conversation as we, if we continue the conversation? What specific information would you like that we can, that we can get, that we can gather as we continue this conversation?
Yeah, I'll jump in on that one. I would like for the president of Lafayette Neighborhood Association, Levy Park Neighborhood Association, Myers Park Neighborhood Association, the Midtown Working Group, and French Town to be at the table to have that conversation because I could tell you straight off the bat, those neighborhoods would be immediately impacted with overflow traffic parking on roads. And they might come out 100% in favor, but they got to be part of the conversation at least. So to answer your question, I would definitely want at least the leadership of those neighborhood associations sitting at the table for an ongoing discussion for this particular item. Commissioner Porter.
I would be happy to have those conversations with them and of course, staff, if you'd be willing and we agree, I'd be happy to do that. I'm curious, Mr. Mayor, when you said that you've been supportive of removing parking minimum mandates for the past 16 years that you've been in office, well, how has that conversation evolved for you from the county to here?
Say it one more time.
When we last discussed this, you said you've supported eliminating parking minimum mandates since you've been in office. And I'm curious with what your perspective is since you've served as this issue has evolved.
Sure. Well, when I served on the county commission, the primary role of a county commission is the unincorporated areas and the rural issues, which are completely different from incorporated areas, especially inner-city issues. The makeup of neighborhoods and the unincorporated are totally different than the makeup of the neighborhoods within. So of course, it does evolve how we look through the lens of where we serve. Nonetheless, that does not mean that I'm against getting rid of minimum parking standards, but I refuse to do it without having our good friends and neighbors that make this town so unique at the table for that conversation. Commissioner Porter, I think it's a great idea for you to reach out. I too will be reaching out as the mayor as well. Unfortunately, we can't have that discussion together unless it's a publicly noticed meeting. And so to be able to move forward in that process and even have the publicly noticed town halls to discuss minimum parking standards and quite frankly, getting rid of them, would give everybody the opportunity at the table. But I agree with my colleagues, that's not something that I'm just going to do away with at the next meeting. I will respectfully be voting against the amendment on the table as well. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I really appreciate that approach. I think we should take that approach to all kinds of new development that we see come through. I'm not afraid. I think we should hear from the neighborhoods on all issues. I think we have a good process where people can come to commission meetings. But I would draw the motion and move that we have a town hall led by the city to discuss removing parking minimums citywide.
Second.
Excellent. Will you two take the leadership on that?
With the help of the city. The city organized, yeah, sure.
Excellent. All right. So we're going to have a, there's a motion on the table by Commissioner Matlow, second by Commissioner Porter, to host a town hall on parking minimum standards in the city of Tallahassee with the assistance of the city. Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on, thank you very much, Mr. Reddick. We are on item number 12.03. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item involves an update on our public safety camera initiative. You recall, this was much discussed as part of our public safety investment that was part of our budget process last year. Of course, there was a significant investment to add additional law enforcement officers, but a big piece of it is also leveraging technology. In this case, it's creating a platform where our residents and merchants and businesses can provide their cameras, you know, in a variety of forms to aid in our public safety efforts. I'd like Chief Revel just to make a few comments and then Jason Lowe has worked on this for many, many months. It's going to sound a whole lot easier than it is because it's complicated, but we wanted to bring this before you. We're very close to launching it and get some enthusiasm about the topic. Chief Revel?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I appreciate that. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. We are really excited to be here and to share this initiative with you. This will provide that public partner, public-private partnership that we've been talking about. We talk all the time about we can't do this alone and it takes us working with our community. And this is just another example of that. And we are really excited about this force multiplier, how we are incorporating that technology that you've supported. You know, you've been incredibly supportive with the public safety initiatives that we've done through officers and through technology. And this is one of those technological things, which is just the next iteration in the evolution of where we're going with that technology. So I'm going to have Jason Lowe come up here and talk about the specifics of what we're calling, or what will be called Connect Tallahassee. Again, we know that a small percentage of our criminals in town commit a large portion of those crimes. And the faster that we can solve crimes, the safer our community is. We know that. That's proven time and time again. And then TPD is the expert when it comes to these type of things. We know which tools we need to implement to do this. And with your support, this is just one of those tools which we are really excited about, again, incorporating our partnerships with the community to make our community safer. So.
Excellent. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. What we want to talk about today is an update on our public safety camera initiative. So go to the next slide. What we started out, we started out this program back in 2017 in the Bond community and it's materialized over about the last six and a half years. So as we've expanded to approximately about six other neighborhoods and then cameras throughout our community, we're at about approximately 93 cameras and those are spread throughout the community. We found that these public safety cameras have been instrumental in providing valuable evidence when we do have incidents in our community, especially like when we have a location in our Pensacola Street corridor. It's provided closure on cases that we've had. So in furtherance of the city commission strategic strategy, we are moving into our next phase now. Our next phase will be our public safety camera initiative and we're going to leverage, next slide, our partnership with community cameras. So now instead of the PD having to go out and install this infrastructure, you know, most businesses and community partners, they have their own cameras out there. So now we're going to institute a policy where we can leverage those rather than us having to provide our more infrastructure out there, we can partner with them. So like the chief said, we're asking the community to come along with us, right, on this. We can't do this alone. So since we've installed these public safety cameras, now we're leveraging this base with the community cameras and a voluntary program. So the voluntary program will have basically a two-tiered approach. So the first tier would be a camera registry. So when we stand up this website, it'll be Connect Tallahassee, they'll have the option to go to that website, they can click on it, and within two minutes, they can just register their camera. That will just be simply them telling us where they are located, their cameras that they have, and then a point of contact. So should there be incidents, say, in their neighborhood, if we have auto burglaries, we could draw like what they call geo fence around a certain area and then we can automatically send out a message to them and say, hey, we had issues in your neighborhood last night. If you happen to have any videos that you may have captured between midnight and 4:00 a.m., here's a link if you can attach those to us and provide those back. So that's just a camera registry. That saves us an investigative time to where we wouldn't have to go out and canvass. So we're going around looking, going, okay, I see a camera here, I see a camera there. They can immediately send that out and get that information back so they can use that investigative time more efficiently. So the second point would be integrated cameras. So now businesses, if they have cameras that they'd like to share with us, they can buy one of these edge devices and they can hook up the four cameras to it and it would give us the option to where. give us the option to where they would allow us access into that edge device, so it'll save between 48 and 72 hours of video, depending on the resolution of the cameras that they have. And so, immediately upon a call for service, say, we had one that was out of business, we pull up that map, and it shows where those integrated cameras are, we can log in and pull that video back, so now we can see what the suspect may have been wearing, what they may have been driving at that time, and we'll feed that in near real time. So now, we have that evidence as the officers are responding to the call for service, we can better provide that information to the officers in the field. Next slide. The collaboration part of that is we're leveraging the infrastructure that we have at our Capital Real-Time Crime Center. So this information will be fed back to those analysts that are there, so as the officers are responding, they can provide that information and those investigative leads in a real-time environment. So we will also be leveraging the technology across the platforms on our partners with Leon County Sheriff's Department, FSUPD, and FDLE there that we have at the Real-Time Crime Center. So all this information will be provided in a cloud-based solution, and it's all CEGIS complying, our criminal justice information system is all encrypted, so we provide those assets to our community. So what we're looking at is, this is, as the chief said, a force multiplier. So now, instead of us having to go out and expend those resources to do it, now we're leveraging what's out there, and we're asking our community partners to come along with us in this journey to help make our community safer. So, next slide, please. So we'll be launching this, we're about four weeks out from launching Connect Tallahassee. In that time, as we ramp up, we'll be engaging in a community education platform to further address some of those issues, like I said, on how you can register a camera, how we can, you can integrate your cameras, and we'll be building up to a program launch. We've seen this in other communities, they've done this in Duval County, we've seen this in Atlanta with Connect Atlanta, to where the access to the cameras has grown exponentially, and it's really been, like we said, a force multiplier, and it's helped us and helped those communities in providing a safer environment and quicker closure when there are events. So with that, if you have any questions?
Great. Do you have any public comment on this item, Mr. Plurk?
Yes, Mayor, we have two speakers.
Okay, thank you. We'll get this public comment, and then we'll come back to the conversation.
First speaker is Stanley Sims, and then Michelle will be the next speaker.
Name and address for the record, please.
Stanley Sims, 1320 Avondale Way. I must admit, when this program was first introduced to me, I did not like it. But results are undeniable. Ms. Jackson, that lives right over there off Saxon Street, over there on that corner where all the vagrants were. Those cameras went up, and the chief here is shaking his head, because I thought that was an invasion of people's privacy. I've come to learn that's a protection of one's democracy. They don't hang out there anymore. Those people are happy. They are so happy. Ms. Jackson told me about a project that they have in Chicago, where they give them eye rings, where neighbors whose houses in certain directions, the police furnish them the camera, and they allow them to. In other words, this is a damn good job. The unknown is scary. That's why it's important that we educate our citizens and let them know how we're helping them. When I was a baby, my mama was changing me, I was crying, but if I kept that period diaper on me, I would get a rash. So I had to get that off of me. This is kind of one of those things, I didn't understand you were helping me, so I was crying. But the proof, Mr. Mayor, it cannot be denied. And one thing that Ms. Jackson said to me is, Stanley, you pull your phone out, when you think that a cop is doing you, why would you not want a camera running when someone else is doing something? And that made sense to me. And so, I want to say, chief, thank you. I also would like to ask you if you could look into those eye roll for, you know, especially we've got new, I'm thinking about Columbia, is that the name of the states on Orange Avenue? Where they, in Chicago, in those high-rise buildings? I am not anti-police, I just want to understand. I'm a hard person to ignore when I ask questions, because I love my community. I may have a strange way of showing it, but I want things to work for my children, my wife. She's a good woman, she's pretty too, you know? But I want to let you guys know, these things, these are the type of initiatives in our community, when you educate us, you build a relationship with us, we can accept them. This is a win for everyone. Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, and the police chief. Those rings are not that expensive. The one that introduced this project, this community project to me was Dustin Revis. If we can expand that, I would love it. And I also would love to get some of these things in these high-crime areas out in the open, but I just wanted to come up and say, this was one I got wrong, and I can publicly say, I apologize, good job.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Michelle. I don't have a last name, but Michelle. Then no other speakers, Mayor.
Excellent. All right, quick question before we go into commissioner discussion. This is totally voluntary, correct? Nobody is forcing the private industry to participate, nobody is forcing residents to participate. If you don't want to participate, then you don't have to. Chief, come on up real quick. This is also, you know, some people are gonna get into the, well, I'm being recorded without my permission. How is this different from, say, a camera on an ATM that you walk by?
Correct. We don't monitor this at all. This is something where we go in and we request access to the information that you've already recorded, and you can allow that or you cannot allow that. So again, it's totally voluntary. It's not something that we monitor, it's not something that we go in and look at, where we're looking at those cameras, unless it's integrated, and Jason, you correct me if I'm wrong, unless it's integrated and you've allowed that, and that's mostly for businesses where they have people coming and going in their businesses and things happen within their business, that they would want us to see robberies, burglars, things like that within their business. So totally voluntary, and again, we are not monitoring that.
Excellent. It's the next logical step in the Real-Time Crime Center. Appreciate it. Open it up for discussion, Commissioner, I mean, Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to mention too, that when we did the cameras in the Bond community, we saw a 30% reduction in crime in that high-crime area.
Absolutely.
And so, it does work.
It does.
It is completely voluntary, completely voluntary, because I want to make sure everyone understands that, and I'm sure, chief, that will be a part of the public education process.
Absolutely.
Making sure, and that no one is being recorded when they don't want to be recorded.
Absolutely.
But I commend you, chief, and the department for this initiative. We have been fortunate to have cameras in my neighborhood, and my neighbors were, I had one neighbor who was initially apprehensive about it, but when I talked to her about it and told her what we have done in the past, and how it will benefit our neighborhood where we have had some criminal activities, she had no objections at all after that, after it was explained to her. And so, yeah, once we do that education process, and our residents understand that this is in cooperation with the police department and our Real-Time Crime Center, and will help us not prevent crime, but it certainly will help, well, in a sense, it can.
It can.
Because it gets those criminals off the street before they can commit, potentially commit another crime. And so, I'm fully supportive of the direction that we're headed in this respect.
Is that a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a motion.
No, second.
Motion in favor, staff recommendation to accept the update made by the Mayor Protim, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Commissioner Williams Cox for comment, we'll just go straight down the line.
Thank you, I just want to pile on my support as well, and I think it would be good to announce where there is this connectivity, to let those criminals who may be anticipating or planning or plotting, you don't want to go to that one because they got cameras over there, you know, you've seen the commercial, you know.
Right.
You don't want to go there because they got cameras.
Yeah, that they can't go anywhere.
Right, exactly. Leave town, we're not having it here. So I think that that's gonna be real good, it's gonna make me go and upgrade my system now, so that I, so it's up to date, so it can be connected, because, you know, you just, you just never know, and you want to make sure that you have another eye in case it's needed to either solve or prevent something from happening. So thank you guys for being technologically advanced, in my opinion, to move forward to help make our city safe, and being included, and being on top of our strategic plan, where public safety is our number-one priority. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Commissioner Malo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few questions. Is there a current TPD policy overseeing the access or use of private cameras, or will there be?
We're working on it. Yes.
We're about four weeks away from launch, but these will fall under the same guidance on everything else we do. There has to be some predicate, some law enforcement predicate on access.
You're sticking to the microphone, sorry.
I'm so sorry, sir. Yes, sir, so we're about four weeks away from launch on this going forward, but yes, if you're asking, there will be, there has to be some predicate as to her access to the data, if that's what you're referring to, sir. Yes, sir, so it'll fall in line with the rest of our current policies that we have now, but we will update it to specifically address these things, but yes, sir, it'll be in the same vein.
The reason I yielded to Jason on policy is because he's part of the team that's working on that and where they are in that policy, but that policy is being developed as we get, as we work towards this launch.
Okay.
So there will be, yes, sir. We have policy that addresses the technology we have currently, but anytime we bring a new technology, a new policy we're looking at is AI, for example, and all the facets that go into AI and the precautions that need to be taken there. So our policy is continually updated, and we're continually looking at it, especially when we bring on new technology.
I think what Commissioner Matlo is getting to, though, is the access question, which is currently addressed under the current policy.
Correct.
Of the cameras that we do have.
Correct, yes, absolutely. That policy, and Jason spoke to that, there has to be a criminal predicate to access that information.
Okay.
Commissioner Malo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so, when the cameras are accessed, will that create a log and a public record of what video was accessed?
Absolutely.
Always?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. If my neighbor puts up a camera that's pointed at my house, my kids are playing in the front yard, can they share access to that camera?
If it's in your front yard and there's no fence around it, there's no expectation of privacy, so the answer is yes. In your backyard, where it may be fenced off and there's no expectation of privacy, where you would not expect somebody to reasonably see that, then no, you couldn't see that. But anywhere where there is no expectation of privacy, then yes, that could be.
Okay. And anytime it's accessed at all, it would become a public record?
Correct.
The actual video?
Correct.
But the constant recording of the video isn't a public record until TPD accesses it?
That's correct. Yes.
Yes, sir, so those 48 to 72 hours, we start in that edge device, and again, there would be a criminal predicate or a reason for us to access those videos, and then if it went forward with the case, and that would be evidence, right, so that would be evidentiary, and we treat that the same as we do all our other video evidence.
Okay.
To answer your question.
Yeah, that does, and can y'all send us the policy when it's crafted for these? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure, Mr. Manager.
I think we need to clarify, and Jason just said it, to the extent it's accessed, it could be part of a criminal case and wouldn't be immediately available to the public.
Right.
Eventually, that information is available to the public, but I don't want to leave any false expectation that if it's used in a criminal case.
Right.
Then that would be viewable by the public at the same time the case is ongoing. And I believe Jason said as much, but I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Yeah, great point, yeah, great point. Any, we're developing an ongoing investigation.
Commissioner Malo.
And thank you, City Manager, and the point wasn't whether, when it was released, it was just that there'd be a public record knowing what was viewed on private cameras at all times, it would be maintained, and people could review that, audit that, see how it's being used, etc.
Yeah, there's, it's a mandatory, a lot of this depends on the contracts and how we work those out, but, you know, the records will be public, there's an audit that typically goes with those at least yearly, so all of those will be publicly available.
And where the, and where, the people who signed up will be public as well, right? Where they're located, if you sign up, would that be a record?
It'll be a record, yes, yes.
The map is what we would provide, actually, we would have that housed at the Real-Time Crime Center as our map as we go through that, so then we can geocode that to be able to access any of the cameras, to answer your question.
It does, yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, on point.
On point, then I'm coming to Commissioner Porter.
On point, I think we want to make sure that we heard loud and clear that this is criminal predicate.
Right.
Meaning that there had to have been some criminal activity in the area.
Yes, ma'am.
To trigger this, and it's not just, you know, willy-nilly watching videos and that kind of thing.
Correct, this is no different.
Something had to happen.
Yeah, this is part of our criminal justice information system, our CEGIS rules that we apply, so we handle this just like we any of our other data. So our CEGIS, we have to go through CEGIS training on accessing that data, and there has to be, like you said, a criminal predicate, we would not just be viewing cameras to do, this would be in response to a call for service or some crime that had happened in that area.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, Mr. Mayor.
If I could just, I'm not sure that we're prepared to answer whether or not the location of those cameras is subject to public record. I think that's something that I would need the attorney to weigh in on, certainly if it is, it is, but we were following state law, but I don't know that we can say in this moment, because we know it is part of our CEGIS network, we know a lot of that information is protected, so the actual location of the camera itself may very well be public record, but I think we need to verify that before we make that commitment in this meeting.
Madam Attorney, do you have any comment as well?
I would just follow that by saying it's likely a public record, but just to be more precise, it may be exempt and/or confidential from disclosure, and that may be true at certain points in an investigation or not, and I am not prepared to answer that, I'm not sure, I think Commissioner, your question was about the map in general, I don't, I'm not prepared to answer that question, but obviously, we would look at that if it were subjected to a request.
All right, Commissioner Porter, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Most of my questions were the same as Commissioner Matlo's, and I would love to see the policy that we have and whatever we're working on that is specific to this. I think it makes, in general, all the surveillance that is just in the world today makes me extremely uncomfortable, but I think this makes sense, and it's something that people could already, and already do, provide to law enforcement, and so, we're not really doing anything so different because it is voluntary. And so, I think it, I appreciate the update, and I look forward to learning more about the policy, because I think that's just an important safeguard for, to build the community trust, because there are people who are uncomfortable when they think about the cameras and everything everywhere, and so, the more transparency, the better, so that we have the community's buy-in.
Mayor Protim.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, Mr. Mayor, I have a ring camera, and I get information all the time, even now, from my neighbors, sharing information about things that are going on in our neighborhood, and I've talked to others in other neighborhoods where it's the same thing, so, and I think that we probably will see a lot of cooperation in this, but I would be concerned if these cameras were somehow made a part of a public record. I would be very concerned personally if that was a part of a public record, and somebody could find out if I was signed up, or one of my neighbors was signed up for this type of technology. So if we could look into that, Madam Attorney, and then lastly, I just wanted to, again, mention the fact that this is part of the investment that we have made as a city in technology in addressing the issue of crime and violence in our community, and I think we're gonna see a tremendous, blocking on the word I'm looking for.
Reduction.
A reduction.
I know you want something more.
Yeah. In crime in our community, and getting those criminals off the streets in a more expeditious manner, and that in itself will prevent crime from happening in our community. So I'm looking forward to this, chief, and I look forward to being a part of it as it moves forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protim has made the motion of option number one to accept the update, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox, although it's in Although it's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Although opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, I have been looking forward to 12.04. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I, I feel that something more grand than a verbal introduction is due here, but I do not have that. I don't have a band, I don't have a, a barbershop quartet, but I do have Keith Bowers.
All right, Keith.
And, and I would like to say that we, we, many of us have now heard that we've, we've got a good report that's based on objective data across the United States. And Keith, I'm gonna steal it. I, I can't help myself but steal it, but I want you to bring this thing home. And this data that, that's been collected, it comes from the Bureau of Labor and Statistics at the federal level, indicates that Tallahassee over the last five years on a five-year basis has the strongest economy in the United States of America.
Yeah.
And I can't do it justice, but for the details, Keith is our lead in OEV, and that's our economic development arm for our community. A lot of credit goes to Keith and his team and the culture of our community, and I would love for Keith to explain this more. I think this is a conversation we'll continue to have, because it's really important, and I think it represents a, a strong foundation to build from, which is our economy. So Keith, please tell us the details.
Sure. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Manager. I stand before you today to highlight outstanding achievement for our community. As City Manager has mentioned, Tallahassee has been ranked as, as the strongest economy in the nation for 2023 by Area Development Magazine.
Keith, is that per capita or is that just a blank statement?
Just in general, overall.
Wow.
Yes, sir. As we know, economic strength is multifaceted achievement. It signifies not growth, not only growth, but sustainable and a diverse economy that can withstand challenges and continues to provide opportunities for its people. This top ranking reflects the innovative initiatives, sound policies, and community-driven projects that have shaped Tallahassee into a vibrant hub. Area Development Magazine primarily targets corporate site selection and facility planning professionals, including C-suite executives, site selection consultants, real estate professionals, and economic development agencies. The readers often, often decision-makers looking for information on business location, expansion strategies, and economic trends that affect industries and communities. The content caters to those seeking insights to optimize location choices to support successful and strategic growth. Area Development partnered with a Virginia-based company, Chmera Economics and Analytics, to crunch the numbers and compile this data. Chmera Economics and Analytics ranked 384 metropolitan statistical areas across 24 economic and workforce indicators, pulled from eight data sets, and analyzed the data over a five-year change, a three-year change, and a one-year change. Some important factors that they looked at include gross domestic product and how it's trending, unemployment rates, what kinds of jobs are growing, how well employers' needs match what the labor market has to offer, and activity in hot sectors such as high-tech, manufacturing, research and development, and other occupations linked to science, technology, engineering, and math. The areas that fare best in these rankings are poised for long-term growth and are hubs of high industry technology, hi, I'm sorry, high-tech industry, and workers benefit from an affordable cost of living. Although this recognition is news today, it's also a reflection of where we've been, and more importantly, where we're heading. The remarkable economic success that Tallahassee, that has positioned Tallahassee as the strongest economy in the nation is a direct result of the visionary leadership at the City of Tallahassee and the dedicated team at the Office of Economic Vitality. The unwavering commitment to the implementation of the economic development strategy with its focus on applied sciences, healthcare, manufacturing, transportation, logistics, and professional services in IT has paved the way for sustained growth and innovation. A special acknowledgement also goes to the efforts to promote success of, the success of minority and women-owned businesses through the MWSBE program, which has been instrumental in fostering a more inclusive and diverse business economy. The Office of Economic Vitality will leverage this recognition by using it as a strategic tool to attract new investments and businesses to Tallahassee. By highlighting these accolades, we will promote the area's robust economic development, demonstrating to potential investors, companies, and talent that Tallahassee is a thriving hub for growth and innovation. This recognition also serves as a powerful endorsement that can be used in marketing campaigns, business recruitment, and partnerships, helping OEV to build on the existing momentum to further stimulate economic development, drive job creation, and strengthen the local economy's competitive edge. I commend the city commissioners, the mayor, and every individual that has contributed to making Tallahassee a leader in economic development. This recognition calls for us to continue our efforts and increase a sustainable and inclusive economy that benefits every member of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll come back to some questions in just a second. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We have one speaker on 1204, Dot Inman Johnson.
Name and address for the record, please.
Dot Inman Johnson, 2121 Tres Scott Drive, Tallahassee, Florida. I love Tallahassee. I wrote a book where I devoted a whole chapter to glowing references to Tallahassee and all that's good about living here. And I applaud Mr. Bowers and the city on its economic development achievements. However, we can't be blind to the faults we still have in the community where this economic growth is not trickling down to the people who need it most. For instance, Tallahassee has a poverty rate that fluctuates between 19 and 25%, meaning one out of every four or one out of every five citizens in this community is living in poverty. And when we have these kinds of outstanding reports, we have to also look at other reports that deal with quality of life, where the people who need it most aren't benefiting from all of this. I played a part in the development on Orange Avenue that replaced the Tallahassee Housing Authority property, where 200 families or households were relocated. All of them were told, if you are interested in coming back when the project is finished, you will be welcomed back. Well, many of those families, for the percentage that's set aside for low income, do not qualify for that project. And so they are still left out in the cold. Besides the high rental rates for low-income families in this community, the high crime rate, violent and property crime rates, and the affordable housing and poverty rates, we have to find a way to make the people who are dealing with that also benefit from this economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Inman Johnson, if you'll please submit the report that you cited, that'd be great, because I'd love to look into that a little bit more, and I'm sure my colleagues would as well in regards to the poverty rate. There are many studies out there, and there is no doubt that we are facing challenges. Every community faces challenges, but I think we're working hard here addressing those. We are not turning a blind eye. Trickle-down economics does not work. I don't believe in it. That's why we're investing directly in our neighborhoods with Neighborhood First programs. For instance, in Frenchtown, Griffin Heights, Bond, and we're seeing the fruits of the labor of what's happening. And that's just one example, but you're right, we do have challenges and we do have work that must be done. But at the same time, I think it is fair to celebrate our accolades and celebrate the fact that we do have the strongest economy in the United States of America, as posted by Area Development. I do think that we are working extremely hard, unfortunately, many on a three-to-two vote to support economic development projects in this community. But nonetheless, we are setting the example. We live in a community where the strongest economy in the United States, the number-one public utility in the United States, and ranked a top 20 medium-sized city to live, work, and play in the United States. I think that's a great place to be while we move forward, working on the challenges that we have. But your comments are appreciated. Again, I would love for you to submit, for the record, the study that you were citing. That'd be great. Okay, our next speaker, please.
We have no additional speakers on this item.
Great. I'll make the motion to accept the report, and let me state by saying how proud I am of the work that we have all done together. It's not just the mayor and the commissioner and city management and OEV, it's all of us together. And I think it does take that vision of optimism. It takes that creative ability, quite frankly, to believe in ourselves and not always try to knock ourselves down, but to really stand up and be proud of Tallahassee, proud of who we are, proud of the work we're doing, and the fact that we're all doing it together that continuously moves us forward. I am, was ecstatic. I don't think any of us had any idea this was coming, Mr. Manager, but when it did, it has taken off. I, I have had colleagues from near and far calling and congratulating the city and, and asking questions on what exactly we're doing, because other communities want to learn from us as well, and I think that is very exciting. Mr. Manager, you want to say something quickly?
Yes, sir. I'll submit your motion if you want.
Oh, sorry, there's a motion, a second to the motion.
I, I just wanted to add this, and we could go forever deep in the data, but I think what is germane to this conversation is over the last five years, and that's the main measurement period of this, this report, in our MSA in Tallahassee, we've added 15,000 new jobs.
Wow.
That's more jobs than the population growth. And so that's enabled us to have a lower unemployment rate, and almost every one of those jobs has been in the private sector. That's something we talk about a lot in terms of diversifying economy. And so those are good encouraging statistics and measures. And, and within that, and I could go on and on, because this is very, very deep data, within it, it tells you the jobs that are growing are high-wage jobs. In many communities, you could find, you know, more retail-oriented, lower-end jobs. These are high-wage jobs. And so all of that is wrapped into, of course, you wouldn't imagine, when a publication like Area Development talks about the strongest economy, it would include that. And so I think a really bright spot is the number of jobs added and how that relates to the population growth, which is even more. So I just wanted to put that out there. We'll talk more and more about that, but, but it's, it's helpful to understand the, the data that went into this.
Excellent. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add, Mr. Bowers talked about the vision of the, the city administration and commission. I would like to add to that, that 12 years ago, when I was serving as Vice Chairman of the Sales Tax Committee, Mr. Bowers, we had that same vision. And rather than dedicate 100% of the revenue generated from the finished sales tax, this is when we were going back to the community to extend the sales tax, rather than, rather than dedicate 100% of the revenue towards infrastructure projects as we had done in the previous years, that we had the vision at that time to dedicate 12% of the revenue for economic development. And that would, that's part of what has gotten us to where we are today. And so I'm very proud to have been a part of that effort, and to give credit to Steve Evans, who was our Sales Tax Committee Chairman at the time, and each of those individuals, because we had to have that vision and share that vision in order to make that set aside of revenue happen for economic development in our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Williams Cox.
I want to say also, I'm very proud of that. You know, life and death is in the power of the tongue, that's scripture. You know, someone has come and said, we have a beautiful home, and we go, oh, well, you know, the roof leaks, we got this going on, you know, yeah, it's all right. I don't think that's the attitude we should be taking. They didn't say we didn't have issues.
That's right.
They didn't say we didn't have challenges, because we have those, every city does. When, when you know, like, the only place that I know that I've heard of, I haven't been to visit, where there are no issues and challenges, heaven. So, and I ain't trying to go today, but we just need to thank our residents, thank God, thank everyone who has made, who has made this possible, and continue to strive to work on our issues and our challenges, so that as we, this, this gives you encouragement, this gives you fuel for the road, for the road ahead. We know that there's a lot of work to be done, and, but we've done a lot of this work. And so continuing to do this work, you know, when, when teachers say to a student, you know, you're, you're on your path to, to, to being great in society, that gives you the courage and, and energy to keep moving on. And I think that this, being evaluated by someone outside of, not within, to, to say this about us, is, is, to me, is what is the courage and the energy that I need to move on. We heard earlier to, to, tonight, today, about the clean audit. That was done externally. That's somebody else who's looked in our, looked into our books and said, you know what, it's clean. And when an auditor says that, like, like, like our Inspector General said, auditors make their living on finding something, even if, you know, they, they have to make it up. They find something, but they didn't find anything. So I think we can't look, keep looking a gifted horse in the mouth, as my grandmother would say, and question it. We just need to accept this and continue to work. Celebrate, but let's get back to continuing to make this city move forward and be the great city that she can be. She's been named an All-American City twice. That did not mean that there were not challenges or issues. That meant that an evaluation was done by someone outside of here that said that we were doing some good things and we need to continue doing it, and that's what this says. In the United States, the strongest economy in the United States, Tallahassee? Come on, let's celebrate.
I agree, absolutely. Commissioner Malo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, congratulations to Mr. Keith Bowers. Y'all have done an exceptional job of both recruiting and assisting local businesses and, and recruiting businesses to our community. I think that's been phenomenal. It's great to be recognized in, in this publication. And I will disagree with the mayor in that I, I don't think we can celebrate this while acknowledging our challenges, because celebrating the best economy in the world to somebody who's struggling in our city can feel like a slap in the face. What we do know in, in our country, as our, as the stock market hit an all-time high, as unemployment came to a level of full employment, 60% of the people in our country were living paycheck to paycheck. The income divide between the wealthiest individuals in our community and our everyday workers was at a higher gap than ever seen before in, in, in history. Housing's becoming unaffordable, wages have been stagnated. So celebrating our economic success is great, but at the same time, we can never lose sight of the full picture, and we have a responsibility to everybody who lives in Tallahassee to make sure they're, they're sharing in that success and, and prosperity. So to that point, let's celebrate this award, and then let's do the real work so we can come back and celebrate having the most affordable housing in our country. Let's do the real work to come back and say we have the highest wages, the best quality of living in, in, in our country. So it doesn't take away from the celebration, but when we ignore the other part of the conversation and we don't see those rewards coming back, that's when people who continue to get left behind, look at government, say they're not doing anything for us, and it's all the same. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I couldn't agree more with my colleague, Commissioner Matlow, and I too want to personally thank you and commend you, Keith, for the work that you're doing and the work that all of us here are doing to make this, this possible. And I look forward to continue to, to build on that success and make sure that it's something that is experienced by all people in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the table is to accept the report, and I Motion on the table is to accept the report, and I made the motion, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem, and Commissioner Matlow, I agree. Those were some pretty impressive national statistics, but today I'm concentrating on the local MSA, and nobody is ignoring the challenges that we face. In fact, if we ignored them, then why serve? I mean, we are here to face these challenges and these issues, and you are absolutely correct. We are not number one in quality of life, but we are in the top 20 out of 17,000 municipalities, and that I will celebrate as well today. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. We are in recess until 6 o'clock. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the public hearing to order. It is 6 o'clock on May 8th. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, immediately, I'd like to go ahead and announce that immediately after the public hearing, I will need to turn the gavel over to you. I need to excuse myself for a community event that I have already committed to.
All right.
I am in the Shakespeare in the Park event on Friday, and tonight is our only rehearsal, and I told them that I have to be here for the business of the city of Tallahassee, so I will turn the gavel over to you immediately.
You gotta go put your tights on.
I will not be in tights, I can promise you that. Just visualize that for a second. All right, all right, all right. Madam Attorney, we are on 14.01.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 14.01 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 24-Z, I'm sorry, 24-Z-04. An ordinance of the city of Tallahassee amending the Oxbottom Terrace planned unit development on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, located on 18.92 plus or minus acres on the east side of Cold Harbor Drive, approximately 1,500 feet north of the intersection of Cold Harbor Drive and Oxbottom Road on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 24-Z-04. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
All right, Ms. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we have two individuals, Cliff Lamb and Ally Brighton, who are here for information and to answer questions, but otherwise, no speakers.
Okay, thank you. Let's move to direction, comment by the commission.
Move staff recommendation option number one, Mr. Tim.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox. Any further discussion? Seen none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. We're on item number 14.02. Madam Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, item number 14.02 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 24-0-18. An ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, creating Article 7 titled "School Zone Speed Enforcement" in Chapter 20 of the Code of General Ordinances, adopting findings, providing for use of traffic infraction detectors in accordance with state law, providing for a local hearing officer repealing inconsistent ordinances, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date. The recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 24-0-18, authorizing the placement or installation and use of speed detection systems on roadways within the jurisdiction of the city to promote compliance with speed limits in school zones and to adopt a quasi-judicial system to enforce violations.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Move staff recommendation for option number one.
Second. It's been properly moved for staff recommendation by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Commissioner Porter, you're recognized for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I intend to support the motion, but I did want to ask if the same policy that was discussed earlier with the Public Safety Camera Initiative will apply in this case as far as the information that's collected? Okay, I'm seeing a yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other, Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've thought on this one, I'm going to be against this today. Looking at the data, I think there are several things. One, at Godby, when we have areas that have 5,000 violations in a day, I think we really need to be taking an approach of the physical infrastructure in that area and what kind of actual deterrent is present. You see a drastic reduction in front of Rudiger and Ra where we've seen increased enforcement over the last year, as well as better signage and awareness of it. So I just think we've proven that that strategy works using live officers to enforce it. I'm skeptical on how it will be received by the public when they start getting tickets long after the fact, you know, with a picture in the mail and what we went through with with our light camera. So I think the goals can be achieved, but I do think we should monitor this particularly, and if we see something like in front of Godby when you're going down that hill and it's 35 miles per hour, but the road is asking you to go 45, because everybody's going 45 because we designed the roadway to accomplish that. I think we should start there in addressing the road construction and the way it encourages speeding in certain areas to increase safety, because I think that would be a long-term success over selective enforcement over the years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any other further comment? My comment is simply, slow down in the school speed zones while school is in. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Passes 4-1 with Commissioner Matlow in dissent. We're on 14.03. Madam Attorney.
Item number 14.03 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 24-0-19. An ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Section 9-98 of the Tallahassee Land Development Code concerning street renaming activities for streets and roads lying outside, I'm sorry, lying inside the boundaries of the incorporated municipality and street naming for new streets, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date. The recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 24-0-19, amending Chapter 9 of the Tallahassee Land Development Code regarding roadway renaming procedures.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Move staff recommendation.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further comment? Seen none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. We are on item number 14.04.
Item number 14.04 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 24-0-20. An ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, providing for a referendum election to be held on November 5th, 2024, for the purpose of determining whether the city charter should be amended regarding commissioner compensation, deleting Section 1-1 of related laws and creating Section 23 in the charter of the city of Tallahassee, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 24-0-20, adopting a proposed charter amendment concerning commissioner compensation.
All right, Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, sir. We have three speakers on the item. The first speaker is Joey Davis.
Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Joey Davis. I am, my address is exempt due to statute. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on the issue. You know, our issue as firefighters has come before the city multiple times, and it's been tied to this issue, and I really don't want to, I'm not going to get up here and break you over the head over bringing this issue to the voters, but I do want to speak to the point of us spending time on items that are of importance to us, right? You spend your time dealing with what's important to you, and this issue has come before the commission multiple times. We spent a fair amount of time discussing it. You know, we spent other time this evening speaking to other issues. You know, we've learned about parking places and cameras, security cameras, those are all very needed. We've given a hat tip to the need for bicycles and a lot of very special things at the very beginning of the meeting. Our men and women are still waiting for a race, are still waiting for our issues to be resolved. Trying to be patient. At times, that doesn't very well work. I know you all know that at times you're not very patient either. We're all human. This past weekend was National Fallen Firefighter. Last week was International Firefighter Day. There's a lot of things that are going on within our fighter department that is great. There are things within our city that is great. All of your firefighters love our city. That's why we serve here, but the amount of time that we're spending on that particular issue is of concern to us. We've only had two executive sessions in over 13 months of negotiations, and I know there's been a lot of political tension leading up to this time, but we've got to solve that issue. We've got to move on from it.
We are on the item of whether to put before the voters the question that was studied by the Charter Review Commission in regards to the commissioners' pay.
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Samuel Dohler, followed by Emily Fritz.
Name and address for the record, please.
Samuel Dohler, 500 Chapel Drive. I once stood here and mentioned how slow the levers of power move when it's not an issue concerning the city commission, and how fast things suddenly move in particular scenarios, like when there's an opportunity to attack a political opponent. We see something very similar going on here, where the commission has consistently failed to listen and actively, at times, obstructed the teachers' unions and the firefighters' unions from trying to advocate for better conditions, and this just generally seems to appear on deaf ears.
Sir, the issue that's before us is not the firefighter contract. The issue before us is a proposed constitutional amendment, charter amendment.
About salaries, yes.
About salaries of the commissioners, not any other, not the mayor, not any other employees of the city of Tallahassee, just the commissioners.
Okay, so there's no time you're allowing to dedicate to actual public service workers?
Yes, sir. We will have unadmitted speakers at the end of the meeting. This item is speaking specifically to the item before us right now.
Can I reclaim my time?
You will have three minutes of unadmitted speakers to address the firefighter contract if that is your intent to speak. Right now, it is on the agenda item that is before us.
I literally started by saying that the levers of power move fast when it's within your interest, and we're talking about something that is within your interest, and you're mad at me because I mentioned a group that apparently is not in your interest? I'm sorry, but our compensation of different groups inside of the city does matter.
It does matter, and we have time at the end of the meeting for that.
No, but that's what this is about.
No, it's about the compensation of the commissioners and whether or not this should be placed on the ballot for the citizens to decide. The question before us is, do we put it on the ballot, or do we not put it on the ballot? It is not any other employee for the firefighter contract. So would you like to speak to the item at hand, or would you like to also come back at the end under unadmitted items to speak and address specifically any other contract, including the firefighter negotiations? That is the question that I'm proposing to you.
I.
I don't want to call you out of order, so please stick to the agenda item that's before us.
I'm disturbed that the performance of city commissioners is not something I'm allowed to discuss in terms of their pay.
You are, absolutely.
No, no, no. That is what I'm discussing. I'm discussing your failures as a city commission, and you are not allowing me to speak because you only want me to talk about what number this is, what number that is.
No, sir. What I'm asking for is decorum in this chambers and to stick to the agenda item. This is the specific part of the meeting where you can address the agenda item. It's called agendad speakers. We have time at the end of the meeting for unadmitted items, where anybody has the opportunity to speak tonight on any item. So I'm asking you, please respectfully, to stick to the item before us, which is whether or not to put the matter that was studied by the Charter Review Commission on the ballot or not to put it on the ballot regarding commission pay.
I do not think that this city commission has shown that it's willing to listen to its community members or the people who actively work inside of this community enough to justify a pay raise, and I think you should be ashamed by the way you're dictating the bounds that I'm allowed to discuss that inside of. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Again, we are on the agenda item before us of whether to put this proposed charter amendment on the ballot or not. We have plenty of time at the end of the meeting for unadmitted speakers.
Next speaker on this item is Emily Fritz.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Emily Fritz. My address is 1433 Vucaray Drive, 32308. I just have some comments about the language in the amendment. The language says that Leon County Commission salaries are set by state law, and that's actually not correct. Leon County is a charter county, and the state law governing commissioners, commissioner salaries does not apply to charter counties. In fact, your agenda packet says that the county commission salaries are set by ordinance. Now, the county has chosen to mimic the state law in its ordinance, but there's a big difference between voluntarily mimicking a state law versus being bound by state law. And the way this language is written, it gives the impression that commission salaries are set by state law. In fact, the commissioners, there is a particular county commissioner who's tried on a couple of occasions to get the commissioners to increase their salaries. They've never taken the bait, because I think they think it would be political suicide, but if they did, they absolutely could do it because the state law doesn't apply to them. So I think that language should be removed from the amendment, and it really doesn't change the outcome, but it makes it clear. So I think the current language is at most incorrect, and it's the least misleading. The other comment is that there's nothing in the language that tells the voters you are asking for an increase. You're asking for the public to double your salary, but you're not telling them that. So somewhere in the language needs to say that this will be a salary increase. Actually, if I were you, I'd probably come right out and say it doubled your salary. That way, the public would know you were being absolutely honest with them, and they would know exactly what they were voting on. This language here is so ambiguous that I think voters may look at it and say, "Well, what is this? I don't know what this is." So in summary, the state law section come out of the language and to somewhere put in the language that it would be a pay increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Stanley Sims is our last speaker on this item.
Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor. 1320 Avondale Way. First off, I want to thank you. At the last meeting, you said there was going to be a change in decor. Being a former pastor of a church, I think, I always say judgment starts at the seat, starts with you. The way you handled that gentleman tonight was with dignity and respect, and I appreciate that. And he walked away feeling, maybe not happy, but respected. I wanted to say, I got up to speak on this issue because also, Mayor, your appointee to the Charter Review, and I'm not trying to go into weeds, this has been a good meeting tonight, and I want to keep it that way, has been coming after me on social media because he said that I flipped on my ideas and got my bosses to change my idea. I was never against raising the salaries of city commissioners because of your workload. It's not just you have a municipality, I mean, utilities, you run a bus. So I thought, "An increase." Well, when Commissioner Diane Cox did not follow the recommendation that came back from the Charter Review, she made a motion that they double the sal. I was not in for that. So my position has never changed. I have always felt that some type of increase of raise for you guys was appropriate, but I just didn't. I just didn't feel that a double of a salary, which is the motion that City Commissioner Diane Williams Cox ran, I just don't think that we could double your salary when you refuse to even look at the salaries of your, not only your firemen, they are running in the buildings. Fires are burning. And to treat them like stepchildren.
Mr. Sims, there'll be time to talk about the contract.
I'm speaking, these are my compensation. I'm speaking in reference to compensation of salaries. It is pertinent. And when I look at, how can we double your salaries? When we're not even having the appropriate salaries for not just our firemen? I think we should take some of the money off of these top management. 260? We've got some, we've got three city employees that makes just as much, if not more, than the city manager. See, Commissioner Diane, that didn't hurt. We don't say everything you like, but just treat us as bad.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
No additional speakers on item 1404.
All right, we'll open it up for discussion. Commissioner Williams Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just for those who are paying attention and actually go back and see what was recorded, I did not make a recommendation to double salaries. Words matter. Don't confuse the issue. The point was to make the compensation equal to what the county commissioners are earning. And I don't have to go into great detail about that. I just want to set the record straight. I did not say that, Mr. Sims. And I sit here, week after week, being accused of things that I did not do so. Tonight, I'm setting the record straight. It's been recorded. Go back and take a look at it. I move that we accept staff recommendations.
As most of them been made by Commissioner Williams Cox to accept staff recommendations, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Further comment? Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe if we make half of the county commission and then we make equal, that doubles the salary of the city commission.
Not the word I used.
Understood. Madam Attorney, I have a question. At a public hearing such as this, the citizens are allowed to come and speak for three minutes on the issue. We had a speaker who very much felt his comments were germane to the topic at hand that was cut short of his three minutes, speaking on the salaries of other employees I think is relevant to our compensation as well. Are we in an okay posture not to let him finish his three minutes?
I think as a matter of, are you asking from a First Amendment perspective?
Yes.
I believe it's appropriate to, for the chair of a meeting to require speakers on agendad items to stick to the agenda, especially because we allow unagendad speakers where other topics can be discussed.
Sure, and if a speaker feels their comments are germane to the issue compared to other speakers, is it up to the chair's complete discretion whether it's appropriate speech to be presented on the item?
I believe in this circumstance, it would be, yes. In an effort to, because it's the responsibility of the chair to control the meeting and to maintain decorum.
Okay. Let me understand that it was the ruling of the mayor to limit speech today that are completely germane to the items, and we're very similar to the comments made by the other speakers who were not limited. And I think it's a very slippery slope when you start to limit speech. The three-minute platform allows you to express your views on the item for three minutes. It's limited to exactly three minutes by time, but I think when we start picking and choosing what is relevant, we're opening ourselves up to challenges. But that being said, I'm going to be consistent on this item because it is doubling city commissioners' salaries if it's approved by the voters to $90,000 a year. As I stated previously, our firefighters are making less than our current salary. We're in ongoing negotiations at impasse on a one-year contract, and a three-year contract is pending. So if city commissioners deserve 90, our starting firefighters deserve at least 60 when we get to the nuts and bolts. Eventually, these decisions will come to the city commission. So let's recognize that there's such a desire and need to raise our salaries. We set the bar high enough for our first responders. On the issue of, you know, should we meet with the county? I think it is appropriate to discuss from time to time and ask the voters, but I just think at this moment in time to ask for double our salary when there's so many underpaid members of our workforce is tone deaf and out of step with the public's asking us to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Commissioner Matlow, I'm going to remind you that there was a point in time when you agreed with doubling the salary of city commissioners to match the salary of county. I would just remind you that there was a point in time where you raised that issue. But what I'm going to make clear, Mr. Mayor, is that this one issue has nothing to do with the other. And I'm going to tell you, I have supported firefighters in the 24 years that I've been in public office, 24 years that I've been in public office. I'm from a union family. I've made that clear. I've been a member of a union. My wife worked for a union for 18 years. I'm there. I have supported our firefighters in every endeavor that they've asked for my support. I've supported fundraising activities. Whenever I've been invited to come and meet with them, I've been right there. I never hesitated. I support our firefighters as much as anyone in this room or listening. I support our firefighters. What I will make clear, as has been made clear by our council before, the city commission does not have a role in the collective bargaining process. The collective bargaining process is between the leadership of the union and our city manager and his negotiators. We do not get involved, and I respect the collective bargaining process as a former union member. That's where we are. The negotiations came to an impasse, as was asked for by the union leadership. We brought in a special master who heard the case and, from what I understand, has a ruling ready to go, but was asked to delay that ruling, not by the city. And so we're waiting for the special magistrate to come back to us with his report. That's where we are in negotiations with our firefighters.
Commissioner, if we can steer back to the agenda.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing me back.
It's a hard issue.
So I want to make clear that we are in no way suggesting that we, as a commission, double the salary of city commissioners. We're putting it on the ballot for the community, those who come to the polls in November, to decide if four city commissioners and not the four of us, I won't be here forever. I can tell you that now. But the four of us should have a salary equal to what the mayor and the seven county commissioners make. We're putting that before the voters of Leon County and the city of Tallahassee to make that decision. If they decide that it's not appropriate or don't want to see it increased, then let's let the voters decide that. But be clear that we are not asking for our salary to be doubled. We're asking the voters to have the opportunity to make that decision. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Porter, would you like to weigh in before we start having? Okay, Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will say, if this is what support looks like, I'd hate to see what opposition looks like. But on the issue of previous support for this item, it was a different time. We weren't in protracted negotiations with our police or fire union. We were getting contracts signed quickly and effectively. We weren't seeing ever increasing salary increases for our top executives that have expanded to now five or six, making nearly $250,000 a year, that have gone up almost the salary of a firefighter since we talked about how this discussion lasts. So we are way out of step where we were, and being able to ask the public this question right now is not the time to ask this public question because they recognize we're not paying other people fairly, and I don't think asking them to pay us more than fair is where we should be right now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to bring this in for a landon, and I'm going to finish up with my comments as well. I'm in an interesting position because this does not impact the office of the mayor. It impacts my four colleagues on the city commission. I intend to support the motion on the table to put it on the ballot. I intend to support it because I believe in the Charter Review process. This was an issue that the citizens studied for many months, took public comment on, formed an opinion, sent a recommendation. Here we are, deciding whether or not to put it on the ballot. I haven't said that, I'll be honest with you, Commissioner Williams Cox, anytime these type of ballot initiatives go on, it's a challenge. I'm not positive it's going to pass. I don't even know how I personally intend to vote on it at the ballot box. Nonetheless, I do feel very strongly it is our responsibility, having gone through the Charter Review process, to put this particular item on the ballot to allow the citizens to decide. I completely agree with you with that, so I will be supporting your motion on the table. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
And the motion passes 3-2 with Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Porter in dissent. We are on item number 14.05. Madam Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, item number 14.05 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 24-0-21, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, providing for a referendum election to be held on November 5, 2024, for the purpose of determining whether the city charter should be amended regarding the jurisdiction of the Independent Ethics Board, amending Section 61 of the Charter of the city of Tallahassee, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 24-0-21, adopting a proposed charter amendment regarding the jurisdiction of the Tallahassee Independent Ethics Board.
Great. Do we have any public comment on this item?
One speaker on the item, Stanley Sims.
Okay. Name and address for the record, please.
1320 Avondale. Can the Ethics Board turn this air conditioner down a little bit? That was a joke, people. It was a joke. It wasn't good, but it was a joke. Being a citizen of Tallahassee, it affords me to come in this building. It affords me the opportunity to share my opinion. I like that. As for the Ethics Board, because I'm not going to allow you to distract me, we wrestle not against flesh or blood, but evil municipalities from dark places, sometimes they control us that they don't even know. But, Mr. Mayor, with the Ethics Board, this is a board that the people come to when we can't go to our city commissioners. When our city commissioners will walk off, hold their head down, not speak to us, smile at one person, shoot a bird at another person, say dangerous things behind people's backs, we need an Ethics Board. Some commissioners, Brother Mayor, we can have a disagreement, get back on. Some folks just hold grudges. They may teach Sunday school, but when Wednesday night, they're ruthless. We need a good inspector. We need to make sure all the loopholes are covered, that people don't go after our firemen in a malicious way. People don't make false promises to my son who was trying to be a fireman and then turn his back on him. We need commissioners that can be monitored. Because everybody don't treat everybody right. I like to give the last of my time as solidarity to the gentleman who was not able to speak.
Our next speaker, please.
That was the last speaker on the item.
All right, colleagues.
Move staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes 5-0. We are on 14.06. Madam Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, item number 14.06 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 24-0-22, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, providing for a referendum election to be held on November 5, 2024, for the purpose of determining whether the city charter should be amended regarding two candidate elections, amending Section 120 of the Charter of the city of Tallahassee, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 24-0-22, adopting a proposed charter amendment regarding two candidate elections.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right, colleagues.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Staff recommendation's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Item number 14.07.
Item number 14.07 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 24-0-23, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, providing for a referendum election to be held on November 5, 2024, for the purpose of determining whether the city charter should be amended regarding periodic charter review, amending Section 134 of the Charter of the city of Tallahassee, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 24-0-23, adopting a proposed charter amendment regarding periodic charter review.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues.
Recommendation?
Second.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Do we have any other business come before us at the public hearing?
We should bring the...
Do we have anything else before the public hearing?
No, sir.
Okay, we are now back on policy formation and direction, 12.01. Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 12.01 is the Resolution Number 24-R-16, instructing the supervisor of elections of Leon County to include four questions on the ballot for the general election on November 5, 2024. The staff recommendation is to approve, option number one, approve Resolution Number 24-R-16, instructing the supervisor of elections to include the four questions on the ballot for the general election.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues.
Move staff recommendation.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to confirm, will the Inspector General item come back to us at our next meeting with a similar resolution?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no further comment. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0.
Shut up, Shakespeare.
Take a picture of you in them tights. All right, so we are on unadmitted speakers. Mr. Cook, do we have any unadmitted speakers?
Yes, we do. We have about a dozen speakers on the unadmitted portion.
Let's get them started.
Our first speaker will be Joey Davis and then Praveen Gouda.
All right, Mr. Davis, if you would come forward, give us your name and address for the record, please. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Joey Davis, president of the Tallahassee Professional Firefighters. My address is exempt per state statute. Several years ago, I and other firefighters, not only from the city of Tallahassee but from around the state, spent a fair amount of our time, year of 2019, over next door at the Capitol. We lobbied lawmakers over there to amend statute or to create statute dealing with firefighter cancer that had been proven to be the result of the profession. As part of that legislation... As part of that legislation, we looked for there to be some compensation that dealt with it, basically a insurance product that deals with that, similar to other insurance products that we have, and I'm sure all of you have. But as part of that, we also looked at the time and the way that it would be dealt with as a injury or illness incurred in the line of duty. The statute was difficult to get passed at times. We had the two gentlemen that I have with me from our state association, they had worked on this for years, and that particular year, we pretty much had unanimous support up on the Hill by the time it passed. As part of that legislation, it was written in there that the cancer had to be dealt with as a line of duty injury or illness, and it needed to be handled similar to other line of duty injuries or illness, and the time taken care of as part of that. We asked for that once I was diagnosed with cancer about 13 months ago. The city said that the language in there was not clear, and we did our best as an organization to get them the information needed. We set up a meeting with the senator who sponsored the bill, her staff member who helped carry that bill through, who is now a state rep, along with our people at our state association that helped write the bill, to help the city understand the intent, what the language meant, and what was in the law. The city decided that it was still not applicable. We currently are in civil court, in circuit court.
You have a few seconds.
Over this issue. The bill has been signed again with a clarification from the governor, and I've received a letter last week stating that it doesn't apply to me.
You're right, at three minutes.
This needs to be handled.
Our next speaker, Mr. Cook.
Next speaker is Praveen Gouda, followed by Harry Brown.
If you could give us your name and address for the record, please. You'll have three minutes to speak.
My name is Sindura Shastri.
Could you speak a little closer to the microphone?
My name is Sindura Shastri. I'm Praveen Gouda's wife. During the last storm, our house was flooded with water. We have a retention pond behind our house. The water did not go to the retention pond, but instead it all ended up in the backyard and then flooded into our house. We have been trying almost from a month, trying to contact different divisions, different departments to get some help, but we haven't got any help so far. We are not sure where to go, and also we are very concerned because the hurricane season is coming, if there is an issue and if our house is flooded again. And we are also not getting support from the insurance because the insurance denied our claim, and we are really in a bad place right now with the kids and all the stuff at home and very small place to live and no support from anyone. So, we were not sure where to go, that's why I wanted to come here and express our issue here to see if we can get any help.
Manager, who would? Mr. Cook?
I'll have someone follow up with you. My area of responsibility would address that sort of issue. I don't have any of the particulars or anything, but we'll get that. And if you've been in contact with us in our departments, we should have your information. But if you don't hear from somebody sometime tomorrow, feel free to call on Friday.
Sure. Thank you so much.
Could you, is there someone she could get with to give, make sure that we have their contact information? Okay. See the young man in the back? If you would get with him and give him your contact information, we'll, Mr. Cook, we'll have someone reach out to you and go from there.
Our next speaker is...
Okay, next speaker, Mr. Cook.
Is Harry Brown and then...
We could get your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Harry Brown, reside at 5431 Crump Road, Tallahassee.
Okay.
I'm here to tell the truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
All right.
I'm here to share with you some of the most atrocious individuals that I had to deal with during my more than 19 years at City Hall. Number one was Sharon O'Fawney, who lied on her application claiming she had a degree, but the city hired her anyway, knowing she would be a great candidate to carry out the most ferocious and vicious tactics against blacks and other minorities. Sharon was guilty of taking her friend, who was not a city employee on a city business trip, at the cost of $234. She was required to pay that money back, but there was no discipline incurred. That trip was to Syracuse, New York. She tried to bring sexual harassment charges against me with no success. She brought one young lady in from her office stating that I was seeking sexual favors from her, a humongous lie. This young lady's son was charged a few months later with murder of a young girl while having rough sex with her by putting a belt around her neck. Sharon and that lady from her office should regret bringing these false charges against me. My niece, who is a city employee, was the only black juror on the murder trial, while the other white jurors recommended the death penalty for this young man. My niece approached the judge's podium crying and pleading with him to spare the young man's life. The judge listened and gave him life in prison. My niece pleaded with me to not let the city know that she was my niece. She said, "If you do, they will fire me." She even knew that I was going through with, she knew what I was going through with the City of Tallahassee. Anita Favors is another vicious and vile individual who should have gone to jail with Scott Maddox because of what she did to me. She had the two custodian sign false affidavits stating that I was lying about what they saw Scott Maddox doing on top of his desk with his secretary. On many occasions, I asked Sharon O'Fawney, "Why did she treat the black and minority employees the way she did?" She says, "Harry, I'm just doing my job." And she was. She was doing what the city had hired her to do. She was hired in a racist, bigoted...
You're at three minutes.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tavish.
Next speaker.
I'm sorry, may I ask Mayor Pro Tem? The next speaker is Tavish Bryan.
Tavish? Right.
And then the next speaker will be Tara Williams.
You give us your name and address for the record, please. You'll have three minutes.
My name is Tavish Bryan. My address will be exempt.
Okay.
So I want to talk about several topics tonight. Firstly, Palestine. The ground invasion of Rafa is imminent. Israeli forces on Tuesday seized the Rafa crossing on the southern border of the Gaza Strip. Israel will not stop its genocidal campaign. Israel pushing into Rafa will force about 1.3 million refugees to be displaced yet again, likely to go to Khan Yunis, north of Rafa, which has been deemed uninhabitable due to bombing. The worst of this genocide is yet to come, and yet the city council has still failed to recognize or sign a ceasefire resolution. Moving to another failure of the city, Calvin Riley, the case of Calvin Riley. Calvin Riley was framed. We demand that the charges on Calvin Riley be dropped and that Officer Kirsten Oliver be held accountable and fired for her unlawful actions. Civilian Police Review Board needs to meet again and review the case of Calvin Riley. The treatment of him is a great shame on this city. Another shame is the disgusting and unconscionable decision to spend $135 million on a luxury new police headquarters when so many people in this town need real assistance. They need social programs and affordable housing. They need food security and better-funded schools and better-funded and maintained schools, and our firefighters need more pay. But instead, we're getting a brand spanking new TPD headquarters, complete with a museum in the lobby. Tell me, how much of the $135 million went to the museum and the police motorcycle hanging from the ceiling? Is that what our money should really be spent on? The new police headquarters displays a sharp contradiction in this city. While its commissioners give lip service to helping those who need it most, their actions shows that what they care about most is policing.
You're at 30 seconds.
Policing and increasing their own salary, while our firefighters and teachers scrape by with minimal pay. This is a great shame on this city. We need to drop the charges on Calvin Riley, fire Kirsten Oliver, raise the salaries of our firefighters and teachers, and free Palestine.
Next speaker, Mr. Cook.
Next speaker is Tara Williams, followed by Samuel Dohler.
Tara, if you could give us your name and address for the record, please.
2832 Chumlee Circle, Tara Williams. I teach the third grade at Kate Sullivan. My husband Brad and I met, sorry, this has been a while, while attending Godby High School in our lifelong Tallahassee residents. We are hardworking people and we have fought to provide for our children who are 12 and nine and had a good life until April 11th, exactly four weeks yesterday, when the storm came through and our entire home was destroyed. I'm here tonight with my husband to appeal to you guys to help our family in this situation where it became uninhabitable. We have been advised and told by multiple people that this was not a natural disaster, but that this disaster was due to the failure of the city's sewage utility systems. We know this is not the first time that this has happened. In the past, the city set a precedent, took ownership of the failure and provided the assistance necessary to make those families whole again. We're asking for nothing less. If you are not aware of what my family had endured, I have sent everyone on this panel an email. Let me paint you a short but vivid description of our reality. We woke up at 4:00 a.m. with sewage coming from every toilet, tub, shower, and sink in our house. This was raw sewage that came from the city. This was not from our house. We were ankle-deep, my husband and I, and covered in the entire house with poop, strangers' tampons, because I had a hysterectomy five years ago. We also had toilet paper and other things that were coming through our house, and we have put out thousands upon thousands of dollars to get this sewage off our floors, but it is still in and under our home, and it's still uninhabitable. We've not been in our home in four weeks. I have been a teacher for 17 years and 15 of those in Title I. I have dedicated my life to this city and the families in this community, and I fight every day for my students, and we are asking for you to take responsibility for this and fight for our family, because this was not something that should have happened to us, and this has happened to others before, and we know we are not the only people this happened to that day, and this is not on us. This is not an insurance claim that can be made, and this is on this city to take responsibility for this. Thank you.
Yeah, and if I could...
Just a second, just one second.
Have the gentleman in the black shirt there will get some information from you. We may obviously already have it based on what you've described, but I will reach out to you tomorrow.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next speaker is Samuel Dohler, and then we will hear from Kelly Pacetti.
Name and address for the record, please.
Samuel Dohler, 500 Chapel Drive. Ironically, this is actually the part where I talk to you guys about the First Amendment and free speech, but I'm here today because of the arrests at the encampment. We ran an encampment at FSU for about five days, and it stayed peaceful during the time. Everyone there was very well-disciplined, everyone was very good about following rules, and we were collectively petitioning our school, but repeatedly saw barriers put in our place. The police routinely abused their authority to harass student demonstrators, trying to make people move over and over and over again, making up rules to threaten arrest, one of my personal favorites being that banging drums is a particular rule that cannot be broken and threatening a student who is protesting with arrest. Despite our overwhelming compliance, five members of Students for Democratic Society were arrested for the violation of allegedly camping, and another for speaking the names of Palestinians at their graduation. I stand with TCAC, asking you to support these members of our community. Protesting is not a crime. You cannot be silent in the face of this discriminatory application of the law. This can be seen most vividly in the police's treatment of the counter protesters. While I was there on Thursday, I witnessed counter protesters spitting at pro-Palestinian protesters, saying anti-Semitic and Islamophobic taunts, throwing a sign at a protester. There was even a moment when several of them came into the face of pro-Palestinian protesters trying to instigate something, and I had to basically verbally drag the police over, go do their jobs, and protect us. This is not equal protection under the law. This is targeting pro-Palestinian protesters, and I want you to take a stand with these protesters who are arrested, because they have not done anything wrong, and it is not okay for the selective enforcement of rules to occur when harassment is occurring and that is going completely unaddressed. It is not upholding the dignity of these six protesters or the over 40,000 Palestinian deaths that the city continues to ignore despite continued petition about this issue and asking for a resolution to be passed.
You're at 30 seconds.
We really, we want you to stand with the people, but honestly, it's pretty hard to see you guys standing with the people when we just had like an hour-long recess and the mayor's already gone and not watching public comment. Please stand with us. Please stand for free speech. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Cook.
Our next speaker is Kelly Pacetti, followed by Matt McAfee.
Give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kelly Pacetti. Address is P.O. Box 3947, Tallahassee, 32312. Good evening, city manager, city commissioners, and city staff. Before I start, I'm not sure if you guys have the packet of the project that I'm about to discuss. I want to thank you for your time and efforts this evening. I'm sure it's been a long day, so I appreciate your time. I don't think any of you know me, so I would like to start with introducing myself and share a little bit about my background. I said my name is Kelly, and I currently work for GBGH Construction. I also recently acquired my own contractor's license and now own a minority construction company in town. I was born and raised in Medellin, Colombia, and moved to the United States about 10 years ago. I am now a proud citizen and resident of Tallahassee with my husband and two kids. This is my first time speaking in a government meeting setting, and I am grateful and honored to be in front of you today. I have seen the city grow and adapt to the economy changes that have affected the whole country in the past few years, and it's been inspiring to see and experience the growth that Tallahassee has implemented these past few years. But I'm also hopeful, as many other residents, to see continuous growth that will impact and benefit the city in different ways by considering the market district development project that we're presenting today and that packet that we passed. The currently proposed market park project utilizes existing city-owned property for a much better purpose and benefit of the community. What we are proposing not only enhances the current design, but it also adds residential and makes use opportunities as well as increase tax base and positive economic impact. This project will not only create a thriving space for the community after its completion, but it would also... but it would also create job opportunities, including minority-owned businesses such as mine. And to be able to participate in this unique project would be a life-changing event that will open other opportunities for people like me that are trying to advance in a fast-paced industry like it is, like construction is. The current blueprint design includes pickleball courts, recreation and walking areas, green spaces, water features, and splash pad. However, there is a limited amount of parking dedicated for the park. Our proposed conceptual design includes all of these features with almost twice the amount of public parking spaces available. This is just one of the many benefits that we believe our project brings to the table, and we implore the city to consider the sale and development of this property for higher and better use for decent future generations to enjoy. I want to thank you all again for your time, um, city commissioner, city manager, and, uh, if there are any questions or comments about this, I would like to pass that to the team leader, which is Matt McAfee, who is the next person to speak. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matt McAfee, uh, followed by Wayne Bernie Bernoska.
Matt McAfee, my address is PO Box 3947, um, Tallahassee, Florida. Uh, good evening, commissioners and, uh, city manager and city staff. Uh, very impressive, uh, in my opinion, just wanted, uh, to mention that I'm very proud of Kelly and where she's come from and how she's, uh, made Tallahassee her home. Uh, I also want to, uh, recognize first responders and, uh, firefighters in the room and, and, uh, police officers. Thank you all for your, uh, committed, um, your commitment to City Tallahassee. Very excited about the awards that we're getting for, uh, being the best city. Uh, we do have a market district park that has been through all of the, all of the different steps and processes for the last three or four years, and it's a beautiful park concept. It's a beautiful idea. Uh, I, I, I think it's going to enhance the community greatly. However, I would like to, uh, ask the commission, and I would like to ask our city manager to please, uh, open the door slightly for us to at least have conversations with city staff, uh, blueprint, uh, about a potential development that would help offset the cost of this project or millions of dollars potentially of the project by committing, uh, creating a community district development, uh, community development district that would help offset the public infrastructure, create additional parking, more parking for what we are already proposing, uh, for the park. So essentially, um, uh, can't sum all this up in three minutes, but we've, we've given you all, uh, documentation and some conceptual ideas. We've developed a, uh, a great local team, uh, of engineers, um, attorneys, um, architects, uh, and we'd really like to discuss this, uh, uh, opportunity specifically because the city does not own the entire parcel that the park has been proposed on, uh, which I think is important to understand is, uh, the park's been approved, everything's ready to move forward except for one last little agreement. Uh, so I do believe this would have a positive impact on residential, uh, I believe, uh, on the residents around, I believe it have a positive impact on our community. The biggest items that it would create is tax base, uh, for our community.
You have about 30 seconds.
Thank you, sir. It would offset costs, um, for the park and, and include public infrastructure as well. So I would, uh, like to end my time with just asking, uh, city managers and, uh, city commissioners to please consider allowing staff or opening the door for us to have some further discussions in regards to this potential development. I know it's late in the game, but I would really appreciate that. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Cook.
Next speaker is Wayne Bernie Bernoska, and then Tito Leaden.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
You can give us your name and address for the record.
Uh, Wayne Bernoska, I, I believe I'm exempt, but I'm a new face, so I'll give you my address, 343 West Madison, Tallahassee, Florida, 32301. Uh, thank you, Mayor, Pro Tem and Commissioners for giving me a few minutes to address you. As I just stated, my name is Wayne Bernie Bernoska. I thought I was being left too late because I have the long last name, and it's kind of a different one. I have the honor and privilege of serving as the per, uh, president for the Florida Professional Firefighters, uh, serving over 28,000, uh, firefighters here in the state of Florida, including, uh, your heroes here in the state or in the city of Tallahassee that protect your, uh, your, your, um, residents. Usually I'm in my lane across the street and, and, and addressing our, our legislators over there, but I felt it was important to show up here tonight to talk about an issue that was brought forward by the city, uh, actually a challenge to our, our law that we passed, our cancer coverage law in 2019. Your city, along with one other in the state, since 2019, is the only city that has brought this forward, challenging a clarification to some of the benefits our members would receive if they contracted cancer as, as a occupational, uh, hazard of the job. To address that, we did bring this forward, working with our, uh, state fire marshal and CFO Jimmy Petronas. We addressed it with, with the state legislature this year. They did clarify that provision for you, so it would be easier for us to move forward and, uh, rather than spend a lot of taxpayers' money and litigation to get this done. Our objective is to protect our firefighters from the hazards that they incur while trying to save and do their job for the public. And so I implore you to look at the, look at what the governor just signed, look at the changes we made, the clarifications to the law that you asked us to do, and settle this issue. That's as easy as it gets. I will make myself available. I know there's a lot of things going on from a contractual standpoint. Sometimes it does get heated in these discussions. Um, as an outsider, uh, that's up here working at the state level and trying to stay in my lane, I'll make myself available to all of you to try to get this to a good landing spot so that our firefighters are treated with dignity, can retire with dignity, and make the wages that they really have earned and deserve. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Tito Leaden, and then Jill Harper.
Okay, Mr. Leaden, if you'd give us your name and address for the record, sir, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Yeah, my name's Tito Leaden, and my address is exempt.
Okay.
And I'm here with TCAC, um, because the police causes so much harm, but are constantly rewarded, right? They have that, they have that new development going on, but last week, the students and community members bravely protested against Israel genocide, against Palestinians, and America's role in it, and they were arrested for pitching up a tent, right? God forbid, people have some care for human beings around the world, and, you know, God forbid, people care about injustice and apartheid and genocide and colonialism and imperialism, like God forbid, right? But the people that harass those people, you know, obstruct their First Amendment rights are constantly rewarded. And on a similar note, you know, thankfully Calvin Riley, um, case been reopened, but there's still not been a condemnation of the obvious misconduct of TBT and Officer Kirsten Oliver. Kirsten Oliver hasn't been fired. You could take alcohol out of someone's car and pour it in their backseat and see their backup on video, and they don't get fired. You know how scary that is to be a person that, to be a black person, right? In Tallahassee, and that could be able to happen to you, and then you are found guilty by an all-white jury. You know how scared it is, and the police still running around? So I need you to express support for dropping the charges on the student protesters, dropping the charges on Calvin Riley, and fire Kirsten Oliver, because that's a dangerous person to have that's running around, being able to plant evidence on people anytime they want. And, yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Cook.
Next speaker is Jill Harper. Jill Harper, followed by Thomas Spears.
Ms. Harper. Come on, come on down.
Been a while since I've been here, and I came for an agenda item, um, the-
Can we get your name and address?
Jill Harper, 213 North Meridian Street.
Okay.
I came to talk about the crosswalk on Tennessee Street, um, and Meridian, where I live and walk most mornings to go teach at the high school or in the middle school in the neighborhood, and it is so dangerous because they come down the hill on Tennessee, and when the light turns yellow, they speed up, and we count. Um, I take, there are a lot of kids that come to Leon that take the city bus, then they get off, and, um, it's really dangerous. I've gone to the deputy at the schools, and they've told me basically, and not in an unkind way, but it was going to take someone getting killed for something to be done. So it does, it's great that you have done something before someone was injured. But while I'm here, I want to make a joke and say some of the com, comments tonight have been better than the Donald Trump trial, but, um, it's not really funny because what's become of our civic discourse. Um, in 1991, I founded an art program in Frenchtown called Florida Arts and Community Enrichment. Commissioner Richardson, mayor, um, and I worked together, but I worked with Tallahassee Housing Authority, the schools, churches, FSU. We had everything from karate to ballet, painting, and I just want to say that if we put the money into our youth in the front end, it really saves us. There's a lot of facilities, a lot of schools in the summer that are open that we could be providing tutorials, healthy meals. And lastly, I want to say that global warming is a real thing. My home was flooded, as well as two of my neighbors. We live in townhouses, and I'm not going to go into what happened. It was a city mistake, a big one, and we have, I can't close some of my doors because the floors are warped. So I think in the future, it would be good for us to consider as citizens and leaders, um, alternatives to just this rampant building without regard to our environment. The water has to go somewhere, and as we've seen tonight, it's going into people's homes. So thank you for all you do, and thanks for passing the ordinance for the cameras, at the lights, at the schools, and, um, that's all I have to say.
Mr. City Manager, is it possible that someone could get with her on that and see if that's an issue that can be addressed? Okay.
Nothing, Steve. Steve Shaffer. Let's, let's make contact. Thank you, Steve.
Okay. All right. Any other speakers, Mr. Cook?
Thomas Spears is our last speaker in person. We do have one person connected virtually.
Okay. Mr. Spears, good evening. Give us your name and address for the record and, uh-
Uh, Thomas Spears, um, 32303.
Okay.
Uh, I want to start with the cost of the police headquarters. Uh, why does the headquarters have all these extra meeting and conference rooms and the museum, as mentioned before, especially when the plaza itself has a bunch of extra buildings that could be used for all these meetings? What are the, what is it expensive to add those extra buildings? Is that what, is part of what's inflating the, the incredible cost for the depart, for the, for the department plaza? And also, why is it being built for, to last 100 years? Part of the problem with the current building is that it's lasted 100 years. Why is it not being built to last something like 50 years? And then at that time, let the commissioners at that time make the decision as to whether renovate or totally, you know, move again and demolish that? These are all kinds of things that could lower the, just unbelievable cost of this, this ridiculous department, that's, uh, uh, police department that's seeming to become more of a, they're trying to make it into like a third space. No one's going to hang out a police department. That's not what anybody wants to do. The answer, of course, is that the priority is always to expand the police budget by any means necessary. This surveillance, mass surveillance system with the Ring cameras, I know it's said to be voluntary, but I work in tech, and I know that tech can be accessed anytime by the police if they really want to. There's always backdoors. The police can get these, their massive pay increases, this ridiculous massive luxury, uh, um, uh, department building. The commissioners can get pay increases, but the firefighters can't even get what isn't a livable wage right now. Now, that's, that thing, that seems ridiculous. At the end of the last meeting, the, uh, the mayor decided to break Commissioner Matlow for his views on the police, especially in regards to the Calvin Riley case. Unwavering belief in the judicial process is what led to tens of thousands of black people in this country to be lynched, and what led to millions now, millions of black people now in this country to be imprisoned for crimes that they did not commit. Unwavering belief in the police would never have led to any amount of justice for the murder of George Floyd. In case everyone forgot, the police statement after the murder of George Floyd said that he died of medical distress with absolutely no mention of the knee to the back of his neck for nine and a half minutes. This is why we have to always question the police. This is why we need a civilian police review board. This is why the police department doesn't need to be what it is. They can plant evidence on a black man in Tallahassee and then pretend, after working for the force for three years, that they didn't know that they couldn't open a bottle of liquor that was sealed. The charges on Calvin Riley have to be dropped. And finally, most importantly, is the genocide being carried out in Israel. Students at FSU alongside students in, uh, dozens, hundreds, maybe 100 other, um, universities around the world held encampments in support of Palestine, and when the students of Florida State, some of them wanted to pitch tents that were not staked and they were not planning to stay overnight, they were still arrested. That's a ridiculous charge. Those charges need to be dropped. The students were right about the civil rights movement. They're right about apartheid South Africa. They're right about the Iraq war, and they're right now. Please stand with the students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Our speaker online.
Who online?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem is Ahmad Daraldik.
Ahmad, are you there? Ahmad?
Hello, do you hear me?
Yes, sir. Can you give us your name and address for the record, please? You have three minutes to speak.
Who's speaking? Am I, is the mayor not there? Did he already leave?
You have three minutes to speak.
Oh, okay, so it's Commissioner Richardson. This is Ahmad. I was, I'm here as a, a reminder that, you know, I made demands to this commission over six months ago, and I was notified by John Daly that he read the letter that we had, the resolution, the proposed resolution that this committee should take, to take on and actually pass, right? And even beyond that, he said he read the petition. Yet you guys are stagnated and complicit with genocide. And, you know, sitting on this call for probably over four hours, just virtually because I've been working and not able to be there in person, it's, it felt quite dystopian because the reality that you guys are all talking about, you know, there was mention of senseless violence and gun violence, you know, plaguing our, our state, and not even thinking about the reality that you're describing here is tenfold worse in Gaza and Rafah and Palestine, talking about, you know, wanting to be there for communities in need in time of crisis. Where have you been to help the Muslim community, to help the Arab community, to help the Palestinian community in Tallahassee? Where have you been, commissioners? We've been waiting. Where are you? I haven't heard word for months. When is the time for you to come to the table? When over 40,000 people have been massacred? We're a community in need, or do we not deserve that same privilege that you've been offering to all these other community members? Every time, I don't get a response. No one ever reaches back out, you know? Commissioner Cox even mentioned that we have such beautiful homes in Tallahassee, and understanding that privilege, that we do have beautiful homes here, and understanding that yet our tax dollars that are supposed to be developing our city even further are being set to weaponize a Zionist entity that is massacring thousands. And then there's this idea you're talking about sending money and using money for, for a cop city and adding cameras to criminalize our own citizens is a shame. They talked about it being a success in the bond community. You know where the bond community is, right? The bond community is not a community that you're, 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 you're actually protecting. You're, you're trying to protect the interests of the city and private property. You're trying to protect financial capital, and you want to expand this, you bring up the Pensacola Street corridor. You're talking about the Carney Center, you want to watch the homeless of our city even further?
You have 30 seconds.
Like, it's, it's, it's outrageous. I think, you know, you need to do better and realize that you sound like this is a dystopia. And I'm going to end with a quote from Katniss Everdeen that's ever so fitting. "I have a message for Joe Biden, for Netanyahu, for Governor DeSantis, Mayor Daly, and the city commission. You can torture us and bomb us and burn our districts to the ground, but do you see that? Fire is catching, and if we burn, you will burn with us."
Sir, your time is up. Thank you.
That was the last speaker I have, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay. All righty then. Um, we are in sharing of ideas, and I've got a couple of things that I- We are in sharing of ideas and I've got a couple of things that I wanted to mention. First is Commissioner, Commissioners Williams Cox and Porter and I met on the 18th, I think it was, yeah, the 18th of April with the Jake Gaither Neighborhood Association and heard their concerns in terms of the flooding that had occurred in their neighborhood during the storm that we had recently. And so we planned a follow-up visit with the residents of the neighborhood. Commissioner Williams Cox and I spent probably two hours a week ago with residents of the neighborhood, the Neighborhood Association president and, and members of the association riding around on golf court carts and the golf cart, golf cart were nicely provided for us so we didn't have to walk. That whole area is pretty warm out there that day as well. But we had an opportunity to not only see some of the issues that the residents had brought up at the Neighborhood Association meeting, but also to see firsthand some of the backlog that was happening that was causing the water to, to not flow properly. And so I want to thank Karen, is Karen here, our assistant manager? Oh, yeah, there she is. Did a wonderful job, she and staff. And, and by the way, they also did a wonderful job presenting what had been done in that area to, to address the flooding issues and had not that 50 more, $54 million worth of work been done, 56 homes in that area would have flooded during that storm event. There is more work to be done. Karen and her staff, of course, were with us during that two-hour tour and we have planned to get back with them in a couple of weeks to let them know what issues can be resolved in the short term and those that might take more long-term to address. So that's where we are with that. Karen, is there anything else that needs to be shared at this point in terms of where we are?
That was a great complete summary. I did have a conversation with Apostle Willie Whiting yesterday to schedule that follow-up meeting and we're looking at something the first week of June for us to go back, get back together with the neighborhood and share what we found and what we can offer, offer back as suggestions to them. So I'm waiting to hear back from him on specific dates, but it should be that first week in June.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem, if I can get Karen to also add this, just, just to be clear. The time that you spent in the neighborhood, the focus wasn't exclusively on the, the lake.
Right.
Of course, that, that was the reason you were there, but.
Right.
Staff was careful to look at other issues. Including roadways and sidewalks. And so some of the follow-ups, so I just wanted to, and I know you know, but for the benefit of everybody, some of the follow-up would include recommendations on things we think we can do in that regard too. So we, you know, staff didn't show up with a, you know, kind of blinders on. It was, we're in the neighborhood, you spent a lot of time, you commissioned, Commissioner Williams Cox spent a lot of time, we had the right staff there. Karen was joined by her experts. And I'm pretty optimistic about things that we think we can do that are within, within our ability to make improvements in the neighborhood and that'll be part of the follow-up as well.
Great, great. Yeah, it was very comprehensive. And again, I want to thank you, Karen, for the work that you all did because they even came, Karen and her staff came out before we even got there and had done some walk around. And that helped too, to kind of frame things and where we needed to go and the follow-up from that tour. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Karen, thank you. And any other issue, Mr. City Manager, as I mentioned to you, I've gotten several calls from Mr. Stephen Leoni with questions about where we are with the plans for the West End District.
Yes, sir. If we may, I think we've got a, a, a lot to share.
Okay.
We've got a team on this. You, you recall this goes back months. There was discussion about what's been coined as the, the West End District. In fact, I believe Mr. Leoni may have coined that and that was good. That's actually how these kind of senses of place happen. The best ones are organic. Sometimes I believe we think that, that they're organized by the planning department or something like that, but we have many areas in town that have organically become senses of place and we see that happening in what, what is now referred to as the West End District. When we talked about that, we indicated that you have five designated senses of place that, you know, that's been an official action, but we could take a holistic, so this would not be one of those, of course. That doesn't make it not a sense of place. That means it's not one of the five that were, was created many, many years ago, but that we would take a holistic look. A lot of the discussion was around public safety, chronic trespassing of the businesses, in particular, those businesses owned by Mr. Leoni, but as well as zoning and other walkability and things of this nature. So Cynthia Barber, our deputy city manager, she's been involved as it relates to public safety. Wayne Teder, obviously being a planning expert, has been involved and a lot of work has been done prior to that and we've built upon that as it relates to zoning and growth management, which is at the heart of a sense of place district. Anytime you talk about that, it's a planning term, right? It's not even a common term people use, but it's how do you encourage growth, walkability, vibrance, these kind of things? And so following that communication, Mr. Mayor Protem, I asked Wayne to kind of summarize kind of the themes, some things that are happening that I think would be beneficial to everybody. And so if you wouldn't mind, if we could allow Wayne kind of share just.
Of course.
Summary of what, what we've been doing.
Okay, good afternoon, Mayor. Mayor Protem, Commissioners. Let me first say you're all aware that I oversee the actions of the planning department and the planning department has conducted every sense of place, every sector plan that's been completed in the city and the county. There's actually been a few in the county as well. You know, when we talk about placemaking and sense of place, I thought it might be helpful just to Google the definition that was plain and simple terms that we can all kind of follow along with. And I call myself an expert Googler in my family. And Google basically says placemaking is generally described by a presence of people attracted by stores, restaurants and spaces with transportation options that are typically focused on walkability and creating places for people to live. And I think that kind of summarizes a lot of what the discussion has been occurring in the West End District. We constantly are focused on these efforts throughout the West End District and we've kind of built a foundation over the years, as the city managers indicated, that has led a lot of things up to this point and still things that come before us in the future will be guiding documents to move forward with. When we talk about what we've done, I kind of divided it up into three categories. We've got what I call planning and land use issues and matters. We've got a transportation area and then we have safety and aesthetics. And so going through the things that we've done from a planning and land use perspective, some of you may recall, we have a West End, a West Pensacola Sector Plan. That was a very extensive public participation process that established basically what that part of the community wanted. And there's a diverse section of that community. So it really set guiding principles, recommendations that were adopted by the City Commission and we have used that document continuously, even as late as rezonings in the last, and comp plan amendments in the last year or two, to make those recommendations based on what the community said. That document addressed density and intensity, where you put those density and intensity uses, the location of the land uses, transportation improvements, as well as stormwater improvements. We came after that and adopted the multimodal transportation district and that was a much broader category for about 10 square miles of our community. And basically, the purpose of that multimodal district is to transform the way we think about developing in our community from a suburban atmosphere, which we had a lot of suburban development patterns in our downtown district, and then transform it into a more urban type development pattern. And that was exactly the type of pattern that was envisioned in the sector plan for the West Pensacola Sector Plan. And so what that multimodal district required us to do is change our land development regulations to focus on where we put the buildings, where we put the parking, how we accommodate the infrastructure that is necessary to move people around in other ways other than a vehicle. Sorry.
Let, let's, there, let me let him finish the presentation, Commissioner Porter, and then we'll, we'll come to you for questions.
And so really, the end product of that is where you see developer, development running the street, wider sidewalks, a nice streetscape with less parking between the building and the roadway. And that creates that walkability that we're talking about. Through our comp plan amendments, we have rezoned and changed our comp plan for over 200 parcels in this district to begin the intensification that was supported along the corridors of West Pensacola Street. Our design works team, talking about Mr. Leoni, we have assisted Mr. Leoni with at least 10 concepts, I believe it was 11, of properties that he owns in and around that area and came up with things that may not necessarily fit the rules and regulations, but is something that the staff could approve based on what the guiding documents were that we had in front of us. And not only have we done that for Mr. Leoni, we've done that for other developers as well. Our planning department and growth management departments, we are constantly reviewing development applications along that corridor. You see development right now that is coming online, the large multifamily developments. Those have been very recent. We've actually even transferred some property to Mr. Leoni. As part of a case that we were working on, we brought that to you. The property was intended for a hotel site and that's just on the other side of Ocala Road where his shopping plaza is. You've recently approved a planned unit development amendment for his property at the corner where we call the, the central location. That was for a future gas and convenience store. Again, that was at the request of Mr. Leoni to kind of lift up his property. We know that our efforts are working. I mean, we've seen a new grocery store, we've seen a new McDonald's, a new Starbucks, a new Tesla charging station and it's all opened recently. And I understand there's been information shared with some folks that there are probably four, four to eight different new leases that are going to be coming online within the next year or two. Moving on to the transportation and walkability component, again, going back to the adoption of the multimodal district specifically. It focuses on providing bike ped infrastructure as part of development and redevelopment activities. And you can see how that translates to the new development that's coming online, in particular, on West Pensacola Street. You see the wider sidewalks, the buildings pulled up to the street. That's exactly what was intended from that. And that was no easy task to accomplish and I, and I will say that in a very generous way. We have standards that are different and I would say, I'm not going to say higher, but they were better, they were what our community wanted that contrasted to DOT standards. And so West Pensacola Street is a department transportation roadway. We had to respect their standards and we kept coming in saying, hey, this is a multimodal district. We want the wider sidewalks, we want the complete streets. But their difference, their philosophy was a little bit different than ours. Our staff spent.
Wayne, let me interrupt because I, and I know we don't have endless amount of time on this, but that's a unique challenge, if you will, in this particular area because it is a state road. And so Wayne, the way we attack these is Wayne has a great relationship, the staff has a great relationship with the DOT because it's their roads, their sidewalks, streetscape and we, you know, we work together the best we can to, to accomplish the goal. So that, that's a success and has been part of this effort.
Okay. And then kind of moving on, it took probably two years for staff to work through the requirements that DOT had to call this context classification system. It was something that DOT allows us to go through, evaluate the land uses along the corridor and then develop a cross-section that DOT would automatically approve every time a development comes in. And that was kind of a problem was a development would come in and we'd have to negotiate with DOT. Now it's a straight shot. We know what the standards are that they will approve and that was because of the efforts of staff, which was recently approved in 2023. We've completed another number of sidewalks. Connectivity was one of those things that continuously rang through the sector plan process. Connectivity with sidewalks, we've completed quite a few in the area. And going into the Greenways Master Plan, which is another connectivity, there is talk about connecting trails between various components within the West End District. Blueprint is actually in the early stages of preliminary design for one of those systems that was identified in our Greenways Master Plan. And I think that funding has been set aside at least in the five-year CIP for completion of that project. When we talk about safety and aesthetics, staff, we, through our design works group, we've had our graphics folks come up with some concepts of sense of place, wayfinding, banners, things that could be used by businesses and that is for their, their use. There's not an issue at all. We have no ownership of it. We just tried to assist with coming up with some concepts that could be used within the corridor and, and any business could utilize those concepts. Dylan, more specifically with the safety, we have installed three public safety cameras in and around the areas of Baja, halftime liquors and the shopping center. And that was something that was a specific need based on a lot of communication with, with the owner. We have also installed license plate readers along the entire Pensacola Street corridor and so that's another enhancement for our public safety. We also have enhanced our public safety coverage in the area in the short response by providing more resources to the area. And the data is showing us because there's been actually less communications between the property owners, initiated conversations between the property owners and, and the police department. So, so we know that something is working there with the additional presence from the police. And what the city manager indicated, you know, we've seen over time, there's been some intentional efforts for sense of place and we also have seen some very organic things happen. Examples of our intentional are the South Monroe Corridor, South Adams, Midtown and Market District. And a lot of those projects, sense of place districts were real focused on major infrastructure projects that were being foreseen in the, in that period of time. But we've also seen some very organically originating sense of place areas. And just to name four that I came up with real quick, College Town, Vanman Crossings, Railroad Square, Southwood Town Center. Those are just some examples of those that have an identity that has been created by the businesses and owners within those areas. They've done a really good job of branding themselves and, and what planning and growth management departments primarily have done is to help facilitate the needs for those areas as they come to us. And so we've, are consistently trying to take the opportunities when they're presented to us and apply staff time to do the things that come before us. Those are just a few of the initiatives. I know I probably left out a few, but that's something I could put together fairly quickly. But I think it paints a pretty good picture is we hadn't just developed a plan years ago. We've developed a plan and we're implementing, implementing, implementing on a regular basis.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir, Mr. City Manager.
And I realize that was a long summary, but there's a lot of work and I think that was, when we were talking about it many months ago, the holistic effort, that's representative of even the work that preceded that, you build upon it. But the commission's direction is clear to staff and there's been a considerable amount of zoning and growth management help. We know that a Starbucks has come online. We saw news recently of the Tesla charging station.
Right.
Coming online and Wayne mentioned really extraordinary help beyond what we would do. It was, it was a real stretch to realign land that was owned by the city to pave the way for a hotel that Mr. Leoni is working on. We're optimistic that he can, he can bring that to completion. And so all of that direction the commission is giving, that feeds into the, you know, the assistance, the help, the strategy that staff is applying as relates to zoning and land use and so, it, it, it doesn't seem, seem like a single thing. It's an overarching strategy and that's, that's what we've employed since your discussion.
Wayne, has Mr. Leoni been given this kind of, I mean, because it sounds like maybe he, you know, it was just like the, the neighbors in Jake Gaither the other day when we talked about all the improvements that had been made there. I mean, they're, they were underground and people couldn't see all of them. There was some of them that were apparent.
I think it's fair to say that Mr. Leoni. I think it's fair to say that Mr. Leone has been involved with every component that I've mentioned today regarding the comp plan amendments. We had someone come in with a very small area. He was made aware of that. Because of his interaction with staff, we took it to the planning commission and asked them to expand the area to encompass the larger areas. So I think he's been a key component as we've moved forward with making some of these changes.
Okay. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. My question, and thank you for the update. I'm curious, Mr. Manager, so we gave direction eight months ago on September 13th for an item to come back on the West End District placemaking update, and is that still coming back? That was eight months ago? I mean, I ask because that's taken directly from the minutes, what was passed, and this is what the kind of information I know, I think we were all wanting to hear more about. It's really difficult for me to process all of this information quite like this you listed, you gave us a lot. And I would love, I mean, if it's not going to come back to us, that it be written, you know, and at the very least of which, so that people like Mr. Leone can engage with it. Because I understand he is frustrated, I know he's been very involved, but he is aware, as far as I know, because of what you've said, he's been so involved. And I just want to make sure that when we're giving direction, that we're getting what we've asked for in the way that we've asked for it, so that we can communicate effectively with our residents, and so that we can give direction if we need to, above and beyond the work that's been done. And I'm happy to hear all of these updates, and it all sounds like very good work. But I'm wondering if a more formal item is actually going to come back to us.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'm happy to provide that written update. The direction we were following is that we would take a holistic approach to the West End District and treat it like a sense of place. And those are the actions. And so I'm more than happy to provide that written update. I think Wayne can help. We can make sure everybody has it, so we're all operating with the same information. But the effort immediately was underway with your direction many, many months ago.
Mr. Matlow.
Thank you. Mr. The Clerk or...
Excuse me, just one second. Commissioner Porter, did you have anything else?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I just wanted clarification on that motion language. Do we have the minutes, or did you have the minutes? What was approved?
Yeah. Commissioner Porter moved to bring back an agenda item on the West End District placemaking. Motion passed unanimously. And with all due respect, I have asked about this several times in our briefings, Mr. City Manager. So I don't say this to catch you off guard, I just was wondering if a more formal item was coming.
My question is, why wasn't it brought back, Mr. Manager? If the minutes concluded that the motion was made to bring item back?
You know, I don't really understand the nature of the conversation, other than the answers I've provided. So the direction that I understood was that we would approach this as a sense of place, a district, that's what we've done. You just heard a summary, happy to provide a written report, and I'm not sure what else you want me to say.
Sure. I think the motion as captured in the minutes was to bring back an agenda item. We all recognize what that is. It really feels like, because it was Commissioner Porter's motion, you decided not to bring it back, and that's troubling.
Commissioner Matlow.
That's not the case.
I would not respond. You cannot make that assumption, that is not appropriate for you to make that assumption.
I can make that assumption, based on the record and what the minutes did and what we witnessed, is the item has not come back.
No, you can't. I don't think you can. Anything else, Commissioner Matlow?
On sharing of ideas of this item?
On this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor President. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Wayne, and Mr. City Manager, for this level of detail, and we do look forward to receiving a hard copy or reading version of this. I too was contacted by Mr. Leone as well, and part of what I think is going on is maybe communication, I don't know. Because if he's been involved in all of these actions, and these things had to, since he's the biggest mover and shaker in that area, these things couldn't have happened without some attention or some approval or agreement. I'm just not understanding why, because he's feeling as though he's doing a lot of stuff and we're not doing anything to help. And so I think it's important that what you just shared, that everyone's on the same page now as to what that is. And I'll just say this, as far as agenda items are concerned, if we don't put a timetable on when we want something back, or if it's not timed since, I trust the discretion of the city manager that we'll get the information back when it is complete, or it's complete enough for us to be able to act on it. I don't think that anyone's ignoring the fact, because it's in the minutes, it's recorded. So no one's trying to get around doing the work. Timing is everything, you know. We got a lot of priorities that we're trying to accomplish. So I don't want anyone to feel as though they're being slighted because something didn't come back at the next meeting, because I don't think that was, I have to go back and look, but I don't think the minutes said at the next meeting. I think it just said, bring it item back. And so I think that what we need to, probably need to do now is, I'm sure, I now can reach back out to Mr. Leone and make sure he saw this, sees this, and knows that this information will be made available to him, so that he has an update on what's going on. But in my conversation with him, I thought that he was aware of these things, because it sounds like he was engaged, he was involved, what it sound like to me. So I'm hoping that we get this cleared up, and we understand that we're working on, from the same sheet of music. We are just as invested in the West End as we are the South End, the East End, the North End. In fact, I introduced, because I'm real excited about the hotel, if he's able to get the hotel done, because you know that I've been pushing that we need more hotels so that we can host events and large conferences here. And I introduced him via text to visit Tallahassee Executive Director, so that they could have some conversation about what the plans are. I believe it is important for us to coordinate and collaborate wherever we can. We are one city in a county. That's a blessing most times, and sometimes it's not. But where it is, we try to work together and try to make sure everyone has what they need. And I don't like to make innuendos or make it sound like we're not working together. We are working together, that's why we're here at this time of night, because we're working together. And so I'm hoping that we will be able to get that information to Mr. Leone. And in fact, I'll give him, I'll reach out to him tonight to make sure he sees this and let me know what, and let us know, because apparently he's talking to all of us individually as to what else we can do to help him understand what's going on and what we've been doing. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Commissioner Porter.
I'll wait. Thank you. Are we going down?
On this item, or...
Yeah, I'll just wait for my turn.
Okay. The only other thing I had was, I want to say Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers that are out there. I lost my mother a number of years ago, but there's not a day that goes by that I don't think about her and what it took for her to raise seven boys and one girl, essentially by herself. My father was in the military and traveled a lot. So to all the mothers out there, we thank you and appreciate all that you do. Certainly to make our families be the families that they are, I can tell you, I have a wonderful wife and mother, and I'm sure that all of you can attest to what your mothers have done for you. And so Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. Okay, that's all I had. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Under the sharing of ideas, breaking news, Bayham Use Golf Team just won the HBCU National Championship.
All right.
And I want to thank Jay Revel for sending his in to me, and Marcus Taylor, who interned with Jay this past semester, won the individual championship. So congratulations, Rattlers. And I know that I saw earlier in the news that the softball team, I think it was the softball team, women's softball, was advancing in the SWAC tournament. So this, we are becoming title town.
Oh, yeah.
We're having a lot of champions here. I also want to remind us that May 20th, which is Emancipation Day, is approaching, and there are weekend of activities leading up to that, starting with the, I believe, the Tallahassee Symphony Orchestra is playing in the Adderley Amphitheater on that Friday night. And there are a list of activities that will be happening throughout the weekend, culminating with the festival that will take place on May 20th. And remember, City of Tallahassee employees, as well as county employees, are on a paid holiday on that day for Emancipation Day. So we want to make sure that we remember that and be engaged as we deem appropriate for ourselves. And also, since the next time we meet, we'll be on the national holiday, Juneteenth, June 19th, which is not a paid holiday, so we will be at work, because Juneteenth is, was the day that slaves were freed in Texas. But it has been adopted by our current administration as a national holiday. And so there will be activities in the city that is taking place on June 15th, I believe, and that's also going to be at the amphitheater as well. So stay tuned, we got a lot of good things happening in our community. I also want to say congratulations to the City of Tallahassee. Over the past couple of weeks, it's been a whirlwind of ground turning. Coming to my office, I got shovels at the yin-yin, because we are, things are getting ready to come up out of the ground. We're turning dirt, moving our city forward, and things are happening. Kudos to everyone who has made these celebrations just out of this world. We started with the South Side Transit. Thank you to Star Metro and all of that staff who made that happen, Raiders Marching Band to come over and set it all for us, and to my Communications Office for knowing how to throw a party to celebrate in our community. And shout out to Big D BBQ, I hear it was delicious. And then we had the renaming of Wanish Way to Althea Gibson Way. We had a tremendous celebration there, and I know the signs are going to be going up any day now. I'm looking forward to that, so we can be over there to watch them go up. And then the groundbreaking for the senior center, that was just tremendous. And Ashley, you ID'd yourself with those hot air balloons. I must admit, when I drove up, I thought that somebody was going to try to challenge me to get at them. I was glad to see them coming down without anybody having to get at them. But just a wonderful time, the seniors really appreciate all of that excitement and all this activity. We got a lot of good things happening here in our city. We're not just good economically, we're good community-wise, and just want to thank everyone who has made all of these things happen, and more things are coming. More things are scheduled, because we're now coming, going from paper, pen to paper, and meetings to actual construction, and things are coming up out of the ground, and we're really, really pleased, and thank you all for all that you've done to make this happen, and thank our community for supporting it. We have ribbon cuttings, you know, Earliest Kitchens is open again, and we're excited about that, and we got other projects coming online. There's a lot of synergy in our city, and we're glad to be a part of it. I think that's it, Mr. Mayor Protem. I want to bring good news, because there's a lot of great news to celebrate.
Thank you. And I also wanted to make clear, I wasn't indicating that Mother's Day was today, it's Sunday. Okay. I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah. Every day is Mother's Day.
Every day is Mother's Day.
Should be.
You're right. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items. Mr. Cook, on the Inspector General Ballot Initiative, with our date being moved to June 19th, do we have confirmation from the supervisor that I will make it on the ballot in time?
We'll verify that with him, but I don't think there's any problem with that. Amy, Ms. Toman is nodding that we do have that confirmation. We had discussed, I think, that Friday is the end of qualifying, but at this point, they effectively know the five issues that have been raised, and so they have the material they need to plan their ballot. And so on June the 19th, it'll be a couple of days after that qualifying, but it'll be within their window of actually preparing those ballots.
Okay. Thank you. On the sewer claims issue, not on individual claims, but can you give us, send us that information on the individual claims, particularly on claims involving sewage backup in the house that didn't seem to be related to actual flooding on the property? Because I want to know, making sure we're looking at that, because I read your updated email about whether mixed with sewage or not. My interpretation of that is sewage mixed with floodwater coming onto your property, but if it's a failure of our sewer system that's causing backups into homes, I'd like to have that information.
Well, we'll follow up with you on that.
The mayor brought up at last meeting a desire to talk about the city's position related to the evidence planting we saw on body camera footage. You know, we saw on body camera footage an open liquor bottle, a closed liquor bottle that was unsealed, dumped out and returned to a vehicle that was then listed in the affidavit that, as part of evidence. To me, that is not the judicial process, that's not what's under our purview, but the process of...
I think the attorney has...
Excuse me, Commissioner, if I could, you know, that case has been motioned for a new trial, and so it is now considered to be pending litigation again. And so I'm just going to give my standard caution that we not in public discuss pending litigation.
Sure. Sure. We don't have to talk about the specifics. I like the manager to bring back an update on our policy as it's related to sealed liquids or alcohol being dumped out, particularly on a roadway. Does it speak to that? You know, I know it was recognized as both a mistake by the State Attorney's Office in that particular case, but where the policy is concerned with TPD, I think it is very unclear if that type of action is within policy or not.
Attorney, would that be appropriate at this point in light of...
Again, I think probably in light of the possibility of continuing or pending litigation, we probably would not want to have a discussion about that in a public forum.
And if that's the will, you know, I'm happy to have that policy discussion, because I don't think it's related to this specific incident. I think it's related to everything TPD does going forward, the same way if we had a certain chokehold that we wanted to examine, we should examine that quickly. So my focus is particularly on that. I'm happy to wait, I know the judicial process, I can bring it back at the conclusion of the trials, just to not influence, but I do think it's worthy of conversation. What I witnessed was not okay with me, and we need to have that conversation in how we can more effectively do things in the future. I wanted to move on to, missing a million dollars is still ongoing, I just want to keep that on the radar as soon as that's resolved, I'd like a public update, Mr. Manager. At the last meeting, you requested I do a public records request related to emails and communications with Mr. Drew Jones. I did to the Treasurer Clerk's Office. I got one email back, and it was directed, I guess it was sent to a city email address, but included rescode@comcast.net and tjw@thomaswhitley.com. And I just wanted to make sure, we've had a chance to go through those personal enboxes to make sure that there's no other public records associated. Mr. Manager. What's the question? As part of the records, Drew Jones was sending emails to your personal email address and Thomas Whitley's. Did the public records request, did you make sure that there weren't additional emails, or is that just what was available in the city system?
Are you asking me if we did a public records request in my personal email? Is that what you're asking? No.
In the public, I did a public secretary request for emails.
I saw that, Commissioner. It was curious, last meeting you asked, you said, are we doing business with Van Core Jones? And I know you know we're not doing business with Van Core Jones, and I was, it clearly was a setup question, where you were asking about an email, and you indicated that you knew that was an email sent. I went back and looked, I'm like, I don't know, didn't make sense to me. And I found where divorcecreaper.com did a public records request in December, and there was an email to me, rescode, tao gov dot com, from Drew Jones. And so that must be the email you're talking about, and I'm sure you got that with the public records request information that the Treasurer Clerk gave you.
Sure.
So if that's the question, you continue to ask me questions that you seem to suggest that there's other information to. You got, you asked the question, you knew the answer, because apparently you're either divorce creeper or somebody you know is divorce creeper. And so you asked the question you already knew the answer to, and you're asking, again, a question that you seem to either know, or for some reason are asking weird questions.
Mr. Manager, I'm asking a very direct question. The email and public record forwarded by Drew Jones related to... The email on public record forwarded by Drew Jones related to city business was forwarded to rescode@comcast.net, tjw@thomaswhitley.com. All I'm asking for is if you've had an opportunity to make sure there's no emails from Drew Jones to those personal accounts to fulfill the public record.
Clearly, you got the email that fulfilled the public record, or you wouldn't know the email existed.
In addition to the email in the public record, I'm just trying to confirm that there's no additional emails that would be responsive to those personal email accounts.
Absolutely not. You got the email that was subject to the public records request. Okay. I think the answer has been, the question has been answered.
Okay.
Commissioner Matlow, he's saying that that was not the case, that there were additional emails.
This was the only email sent to the person that was responsive.
Yes.
Okay. That was the question. The direct question can have a direct answer, and we can move on. I'd like to, I do want to comment on the recent arrests of protesters at Florida State University. I do think, you know, we're seeing an increase in enforcement against peaceful protests, no matter where you side on an issue. I think, you know, what we saw was nowhere near the threshold of violence and cracking down on that non-violent speech, I think is inappropriate. If there are issues with tents and so forth, I think there's other channels to properly address those that aren't through legal enforcement. That was not a city arrest, but that's just my position on that particular item. I do think the State Attorney should do the right thing and drop those charges. Couple more issues. Joey Davis and the Fire President spoke today. Can we get information on, it doesn't have to be here at the public meeting, but just an information on the update and anything that's changed since the recent legislation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem. Yes, Commissioner, that, the law was, I acknowledge that the law was just signed into, by the governor on Friday. And that also is active pending litigation, and I would really be loathe to comment on that at this point, but I'm happy to provide information going forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Matlow.
One second. And the last issue, I understand management has a desire to have a date certain on each item. I think that's unfortunate. I think we should give staff appropriate time to do the research and do the best job at an item. I do think eight months is stretching that and a burden and pushing it way too far, but if the desire is for every motion to have a date certain of when it comes back, I'm certainly willing to do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
On point.
On point, Madam.
Staff did not say that. I said that. I said, I said that, that we didn't, we didn't give a date certain on when to bring agenda items back. So I don't want staff to, don't attribute that to them. I said that. So I just want to be clear.
Well, on point, I believe the manager related, he didn't intend to bring it back, so that would be even a worse case.
All right. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I was wondering, Mr. City Manager, do we have a plan to issue a storm after-action report? I am concerned about hurricane season coming and would be curious to learn if there are things that we are going to do to prepare for that, that may have resulted from what we've learned from the storm about a month ago. I want to make sure, I know that we always do an exceptional job responding, but I'm curious if we have a plan for that.
Mr. Mayor Protem. Commissioner, in this case, I would not expect a storm after-action plan, probably as you mean it. This was, we do have events. This was a very acute event. It wasn't a natural disaster-style storm. It was a very intense, acute event. Now, I will tell you that the department will learn from that, understand it was a unique phenomenon, obviously many decades event, not a common event. And so they take that into consideration, and they're planning an operation. And so they've done that. I know they've done that. But in terms of like, you know, you have a hurricane, you do an after-action report, I would not expect that.
And could you, thank you, just because I don't, I don't know this off the top of my head, and I'm wondering if you do, for the amount of rainfall, is that typical for the kinds of hurricanes that we see? I know it wasn't a hurricane, but as far as how does that compare to some of the hurricanes that we've experienced in the past several years?
Yeah, that's probably a poor comparison, but I understand the reason why that would be asked. Anytime you're dealing with rain events, duration matters, intensity over a short period matters. And so it's very easy, if you have a hurricane that lasts many, many, many hours, a lot of rainfall, if it's spread, the system, the ground, the, you know, conditions are entirely different than a concentrated event. Well, I think many of us may recall, just, I don't think it's quite a year ago, in Fort Lauderdale, they had a very similar event. It happened in a very concentrated period of time, and that created this runoff and flooding. That was the nature of this event. So when they measure storm events, we tend to try to compare them to aggregate rainfall events, and that's not always the best comparison. It could be intensity of rain, it could be in two hours that'll create this. And that was the uniqueness of event. It wasn't necessarily the total amount of rainfall, it was the amount of rainfall in the period of time. And so we've had hurricanes, unfortunately, many in the past number of years, that don't cause that phenomena, even though there's much more rain associated with those hurricanes. And so, you know, the inspection is, the intensity of the rain, it won't be absorbed completely into the ground or stormwater system. It creates a phenomena where manhole covers get underwater in a dynamic within the system. That's what they would look at, but, you know, as it relates to preparedness, you know, the team's prepared, they understand operationally, pressure points and things necessary. And so that's how this would, I think, that's the context this falls in.
Thank you. And I knew there was a distinction, but that explanation helps. And of course, just like everyone, I want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to prepare. I, a second item, I know that the, you three sit on the CRTPA. I don't sit on the CRTPA, but I know that the CRTPA issued a Safe Streets and Roads for All Safety Plan, and I understand they've been working with the city and blueprint in the county and other jurisdictions on its implementation. And I'd like to make a motion that an item come back to us after break, so by the end of this year, with a, an update on our implementation plan for the recommendations that were made specifically. There's, you know, certain priority intersections and roads that they list, and then there are recommendations that they make. And so just, I would like an update on our progress and what are we doing towards, towards meeting some of those goals. I know that they do not tell us what to do, we're working with them, but I would like to know an update on that.
I don't, well, I don't know that we need a motion. We can just direct the city manager to bring that information back. Mr. Mayor Protem, if I could add... Mr. City Manager. So I think the question is, what CRTPA doing? Is that, the way the process works is, clearly that's a joint agency representing jurisdictions in our area, which is a good process. And so we have priority projects, the county has priority projects, as we all know, there's road, state roads in the city, there's county roads in the city. That's not all city. And so they help coordinate that, facilitate that, prioritize that, seek funding for that. I think that's the nature of the question. CRTPA is the best source to say, here's how it's working, here's our priority list, whether the city projects are ranked ahead of the county projects. I believe that's the nature of the question, and it's best sourced by the CRTPA. And we could certainly get Greg to provide an update, if that makes sense, but I think that's what we're talking about.
Sure. I mean, my understanding is that, but they are not managing those projects. They have several recommendations that are, that relate to our code, our comprehensive plan, our streets, and they're not implementing that. We are. And so I don't care where the information comes from, and I would love to hear from the Executive Director, but I think what I'm asking for is maybe above and beyond what you're describing, which is our progress on those recommendations, because they don't direct the city. I understand they coordinate, they provide funding, and they advise, but they don't direct the city.
What she's asking for are those projects specific to the city. If there has been any activity on those projects, what has it been? If it's just been conversation, design?
Yes, city only.
Yes, just...
Yes. And I apologize for, yeah, the clarification, just the city.
Yeah.
And not just the projects, the additional recommendations as well.
Right. Okay. And if you could bring that back to us? I mean, unless you just want to make a motion?
I prefer a motion, if you don't mind.
All right. There's a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries four zero.
Thank you.
On point, on point, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Thomas Cox.
As the Vice Chair of the CRTPA, I think that what has been asked for is, can be provided. I'm just concerned about where, what the expectations are, or what it is that's about to be received. We just voted and accepted the safe streets. So...
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. What did you, you just voted?
We just voted to accept the safe streets. So if your question is what has been done since that time, nothing, because we just did it.
Yeah.
Wasn't it, may I? It was, and I'm not accusing anyone of anything, but did you not vote on this last year? The report was issued in 2023.
And that goes, goes to what the city manager was trying to say. It is best to get that information from the Executive Director, because he's not managing it, but he is monitoring and report out on it, and will report out on it. And if I'm remembering correctly, we do have a liaison to the CRTPA from the city manager's staff that we can provide that information. But even with what was done last year, this is a, it's a convoluted little process. It's a lot of coordination. And I'm not saying you shouldn't have it, but I just want to make sure what we're asking for, you get, and it's not something that you're expecting, something other than what you might receive. Because I've been on the CRTPA since I've been on this commission, and I must tell you that it's, sometimes it's overwhelming, some of the things that are occurring with safe streets and all the other things that are going on.
And it's a very slow process.
Yeah, real slow.
Mr. Manager, I think we understand what Commissioner Porter is asking for, if it has to come from you, or if it comes from the Executive Director of CRTPA. I think we understand what he's asking for. Yes, sir. And I think, I don't think there's any way around, I think it's essential that we provide the full list, because again, many roads in the city are county roads, and there are state roads. And so that's the value of the CRTPA, but I understand, and we'll provide information on that.
Thank you. And to be clear, it's not my expectation that these be complete or implemented. It's just, I would like to know the status, since I don't sit on the CRTPA.
Okay.
Another...
Would you like that after we come back from break?
Yes. Yes. By the end of the year.
Okay.
I would also like, a motion was passed in March of 2023, that a review of the Urban Forests Master Plan come to us, including specifically an update on our progress on the recommendations made in that plan. And that has not come back to us yet, and I was hoping that that could come back to us by the end of this year.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you.
All right. And we'll make sure that that happens.
Thank you. I know the mayor's not here, and he is the chair, but I wanted to make a motion that we adopt a, include in our parliamentary procedure policies that we require, you know, well, I'll just say, we do not have Robert's Rules of Order, and I know that that's intentional, and we have a, we use a simplified Robert's Rules of Order. Part of Robert's Rules of Order that is standard is requiring a motion to adjourn in order to adjourn meetings. And I would like to make a motion that that, that we adopt that policy, or that that information come back to us, that we, we require a motion to adjourn as part of our parliamentary procedures. I know that we have a policy that talks about these things, so that would be my motion.
Commissioner, Porter, would you be willing to make that motion at our next meeting when the, when the...
Sure. Yeah, I can do that. I can withdraw that motion.
Mayor is here since he chairs the meeting. Would that be okay?
Yes, yes, that's okay. That's okay. And, and I just, before I end, I want to make clear, you know, it's not my job to trust anyone, and it's not a matter of trust. I am accountable for, to the residents, I'm accountable for the motions that I make for the work that we do up here. So that's, you know, I don't want to have to keep a list of every motion I make, or my colleagues make, to know that it's coming, that it's coming back. And none of that is personal, it's just me doing, doing my job, and in the best way that I know how. And on a final note, I too want to thank, well, want to wish all the mothers a Happy Mother's Day on Sunday, especially my mother. I don't know how she did it, I don't know how any of the mothers do it. When I'm having a bad day, I think, what would I do if I was a mother? Like, how could I do that on top of everything else that we do? Y'all are superheroes, and I, you make the world go round, so I want to end on that note for my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Williams-Cox on point.
Well, actually, I want to, they want one more thing.
All right.
It was also sent in to me, I know Mr. Sims had something about diversity on DIA. Commissioner Cummings, Carolyn Cummings is the county representative, and Commissioner Matlow is our representative, and also Sharon James served there, and they're both black females. So diversity exists on the DIA. I just wanted, for those who are listening, to know that that's, it's okay. It's, y'all in good hands, right?
All right. We stand adjourned at 8:17 PM.